Okay, good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Planning and Zoning Commission of the Town of South Windsor for Tuesday, May 25th, 2021. This is a hybrid meeting. First thing is, I'd like everybody to rise and salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. That sounded much better. Okay. If we could have the reading of the public notice. Just one thing before public notice. These doors over here are blocked off for emergency exit only. Everybody should be coming in and leaving through the front doors here. The emergency exits around the building are still available in case of emergency, but all and coming in and leaving should be through the front main door. Okay. Public notice, please.
Notice is hereby given that there will be a public hearing on Tuesday, May 25th, at 7:00 PM in the council chambers of the South Windsor Town Hall to consider the following. Number one, application 21-11P, REESG NewCo South Windsor LLC, requests for a zone change from general commercial zone to Sullivan Ave Mixed Use Development Overlay Zone of 19 plus or minus acres and general plan of development for the renovation of 60,740 square feet of commercial space and the development of 125 apartment units on property known as Sullivan Ave Plaza located at 959, 1017, and 1079 Sullivan Ave GC Zone. This was continued from May 11th. Application 21-20P, Evergreen Walk Lifestyle Center LLC, requests to modify the Evergreen Walk general plan of development for the realignment of Evergreen Way to accommodate a new 50,000-square-foot retail building, replacing the existing 53,000-square-foot of retail known as Units 500, B, C, and D. This is on property located at 151 Buckland Road in the Buckland Gateway Development Zone, also continued from May 11th. To view this meeting, please tune into Channel 16 if your provider is Cox Cable or go to Copies of the application are on file in the office of the town clerk and/or the planning department and online at south windsor CT.gov/Planning-Department-Pages/Planning and Zoning Commission applications. At this hearing, interested persons may be heard by calling into the meeting and written comments by the public will be received by mail or email to planningzoningcomments@south windsor CT.gov. Persons who may require an accommodation can contact staff Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM at 860-644-2511, extension 329. Bart Pasakonis, Chairman, Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you very much. Okay. This is a virtual meeting. It's being livestreamed through a WebEx conference call on town website as well as local channels and will be operating under the following procedures. The session is being audio recorded and video recorded to ensure sound quality. The default rule for this meeting will be that everybody will remain on mute. Commissioners and staff will generally remain on mute except when speaking or voting and will be generally be keeping video of themselves on throughout the meeting. Applicants should feel free to leave their video on or off, however, they will be asked to turn on their video if they're not present in person when speaking. The public can provide public comments by email and/or phone. The email address and the phone number with the meeting code can be found on the front of the agenda. During public meetings, all the normal rules, including stating and now spelling your name, still apply. If you are speaking at this meeting and have an exhibit to submit to the commission which has not been distributed in advance of the meeting with the rest of the materials, please indicate that you wish to submit an exhibit. You will need to hold it up to the camera so that the commission and all members of the public may review it. In addition, you will be required to email the exhibit or take a photograph of it and email it to planningzoningcomments@south windsor.org, and it will be included in the permanent records of the commission. Members of the public may only speak during public participation for an item not on the agenda and during the public hearing comment period. Lastly, a reminder to the public on phone to press star three to indicate that you want to speak and the pound sign to get back to the main menu. Okay. Our order of business tonight will be first to hear from the applicants, then we will hear from town staff, then we will hear from members of the public in person. This is going to be a little bit different than we normally do because of social distancing and people having to leave after they're done speaking. So when members of the public speak, I'm going to ask commissioners if they have any questions for those members of the public. And hopefully commissioners can get have their questions ready at that time. This is a little bit new, but since people are here and they got to leave after they're done speaking, that's the best time to ask them their questions. Okay? Then after we get done with members of the public, we will talk, we will read the letters that have been submitted for the record, and then we will hear from commissioners. So at this time, I'll call our first public hearing, the continuation of application 21-11P, REESG NewCo South Windsor LLC. Do we have someone from the public or from the applicant to represent? Please step forward.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, would you identify who among the alternates is seated tonight, please?
Sure. I'll do that right now. Thank you. I am seating Commissioner LeBlanc for Commissioner Greer and Commissioner Bernstein for Commissioner Bonzani. Thank you.
Okay. Chairman Pasakonis, for the record, Peter DiMali, President of Design Professionals, representing the applicant. You just identified them. And also with me tonight is Ben Wheeler. He'll be doing some of the IT assistance here with exhibits. We previously submitted those, including digitally. And so as we're referencing any exhibits, because they can't be seen on the board over to your left, out of view of the camera, we'll be displaying them behind you on this big screen. So we'll be doing that. Also with me tonight, to my right, is Greg Nanny, my client, from REESG NewCo South Windsor LLC. And Benjamin Wheeler's here, who, as I mentioned, is our Director of Operations at Design Professionals. And also virtually with us tonight, hopefully they're all on successfully, technically, are Messers Brown, Wentz, Wagner, and Poland, who are other members of our design team, the experts for traffic, two architects, and also for fiscal impact analysis. So they're available online as well. So do you have any questions for them?
Excuse me, Mr. DiMali, could you speak a little bit more into the microphone? Apparently it's not being picked up downstairs.
Can I pull this down? Is that okay? I got my both my shots, March 4th, thank you very much.
Maybe move a little closer to you.
Okay. So is this better? Okay.
I'm sure they'll let me know.
Okay. So I'm just, I'm going to keep this brief.
Maybe you should put the microphone between you and me because you're speaking this way.
This is good. Okay. So I'm not going to rehash everything we've done the three prior hearings. We're going to primarily address the new items that you had requested us to take a look at, and then I'll have some summary remarks at the tail end, and it won't be very long because I know we have members of the public want to speak and there'll be questions from the commission and staff. So we'd like to move right along. Incidentally, just for the record, we did submit a 35-day extension as requested last time, so that's been submitted for the record. Thank you very much. Second item I'd like to discuss is Commissioner Flag had suggested that perhaps we could take a look at a staircase from our development, the residential portion of our development up to the Ayers Road Sullivan Avenue intersection. We did take a look at that. We're going to show you an exhibit behind you. Mr. Foley's looking around and others. That exhibits, so anyways, we did take a look at that. We prepared this exhibit illustrating what such a staircase would look like. It would begin at the sidewalk northerly of Building B. That's the set going left to right. That'd be second building in, going from left to right. That's a 36 dwelling unit building. So it would start at the sidewalk northerly of Building B and would require 60 stairs to walk up approximately 30 feet in elevation change from our residential development up to the Ayers Road intersection. This conceptual plan has been submitted to you formally, and I personally see little value in such an improvement, given its challenges, its 60 stairs going up 30 feet in short order, and also some safety factors here, especially in the winter with 60 stairs going up and down that. And also, the state currently prohibits a pedestrian crossing at that intersection. So I thought that was interesting. So we are not proposing this staircase as part of our general plan of development. So we just wanted to bring that to your attention. Here's an exhibit, 60 stairs, goes up roughly 30 feet in elevation from our, the sidewalk just northerly of Building B up to the Ayers Road Sullivan Avenue intersection. Should I just move along? Do you want me to field questions at the end?
Move along.
Okay. Third item is also pursuant to Chairman Pasakonis's suggestion that we look at a sidewalk from the primary entrance driveway along our Sullivan Avenue frontage to the Strawberry Fields property line where it would abruptly end. We have prepared an illustrative cross-section from Building B, here's, Mr. Wheeler has displayed that now, from Building B that would be on the left now and going across parking lot sidewalk. And that's Building B, of course, is 36 dwelling unit, second one from left to right building on its north side, going across the parking area and driveway up to the existing steep slope to a guide rail and curb along Sullivan Avenue. This would require, in concept right now, require an 18-foot-high retaining wall. We would propose a six-foot fence on top of that because of the drop of 18 feet. We think that's a safety issue, so we would recommend that instead of the normal four feet. It's required by building code. So we'd want to have that if this were to be implemented. We're not proposing it. Followed by a two-to-one slope from the top of that 18-foot retaining wall up to the top shelf, a two-foot shelf, followed by a five-feet concrete sidewalk, which is per the commission's recent decisions for major thoroughfares who want a five-foot-wide sidewalk. So we're consistent with that. Followed by an eight-foot DOT-required snow shelf up to the curb and guide rail, which is the curb on the backside of Sullivan Avenue. And the guide rail, it goes virtually our entire length from the driveway at Sullivan Avenue all the way to our common property line with Strawberry Fields, the multifamily development there. So, and incidentally, that eight feet is, as we've heard from town staff, the new oil and loop, I think it's Valvoline Oil Loop facility that's going up next to the Mr. Sparkle Car Wash there, which has changed hands recently, the state is requiring eight-foot shelf there. So we're, that's why we have an eight-foot shelf, five-foot sidewalk, and a two-foot shelf, moderate grades, and it drops down two-to-one slope, which is very steep. And so that covers that part of it. The current average slope in this area where we have the cross-section, which is the steepest area, is one and a half to one, which is very steep. Cuts are required to accommodate our development to make the grading work, so we're lowering the site as Ben is indicating there where the cars are located on the illustration. And compacted fills required for the slopes, a two-to-one slope, to cover that whole slope at two-to-one plus under the sidewalk and the shelves. And you can see that we've illustrated, I think, eight feet and 10 feet of fill in sections, and it has to be compacted. Another six-foot fence, we believe, should be required at the top of that slope. We have to have a fence there because it's two-to-one. You can't really walk that. Most people can't walk that and you'd fall down. And we're proposing another one, not the four feet, but we're proposing a six-foot fence at that location also. We don't want anybody falling, going over it, kids or whatever, going over a four-foot fence and then rolling down the hill. So, and then to the next fence for the retaining wall. So the total length is approximately 1,360 lineal feet of sidewalk. A normal five-foot concrete sidewalk costs, and these are, I'm just using the town bond estimate form right now. We had a different number from a local contractor we were using previously, but that's $56.25 a lineal foot, as per your standard. We believe this cost on top of our already planned site work, so we're already doing some of this, because we have some retaining walls, it just means they have to be higher, all some grading and stuff like that, would be five to six times the cost of a normal five-foot sidewalk because of these additional costs. We alluded to some of those last time. For example, Ayers Road, it's minimum 50,000, probably $75,000, up to $75,000, just for, if the state only requires us to do a pedestrian phase, if we're to have a sidewalk there at Ayers Road. And you'd also have to have a connection, a sidewalk on the other side of the street connecting to another sidewalk. So there'd be another extension there. So with the retaining walls, with the compacted fill, with the five-foot sidewalk, with all the fencing, the entire length, we're proposing an entire length of the slope on top of the two-to-one slope, we believe it's a five to six times the normal cost of a sidewalk. And that sidewalk cost, by the way, 56.25, that's if it's already pretty much the grade and then their costs associated with that, if you change the grade and retain walls, that type of thing. So we're estimating it's about five to six times the cost. We continue to have concerns about this section of sidewalk, which would arguably probably be the most expensive stretch of sidewalk in town history because it would, concerns about safety because it would abruptly end, raising pedestrian safety concerns, construction concerns, maintenance concerns, including in winter, liability concerns, pedestrians be introduced to the, at the end of the sidewalk to the street at Sullivan Avenue, and also some aesthetic issues with what we've described. And serves, we think, little or no purpose unless it were to be extended to something that's important, and it's a mile down to the existing sidewalk on that side of the street at Hartford Hospital, right across the street here from the town hall. It would also jeopardize the, we think it would jeopardize the financial health of the Sullivan Avenue Plaza redevelopment project at this high cost. We also understand that Chief Lindstrom has also weighed in on this. I saw a copy of the letter this afternoon, especially with regard to pedestrian safety, so I'll leave it to that, what his comments are. Accordingly, we have not added this to our general plan of development, but thank you for raising the suggestion. In conclusion, we presented a zone change and general plan application which meets your criteria for a zone change. It meets the intent and letter of the Sullivan Avenue Mixed Use Development Zoning Text Amendment adopted by this commission in January of last year, after I think it was three public hearings and a lot of debate. And it conforms to your adopted plan of conservation development, which calls for mixed-use developments for economic redevelopment along this stretch of Sullivan Avenue in the general commercial zone. Town staff appeared through their comments to concur with this statement as well. With this approval, this aging property can be revitalized into a modern mixed-use development of which we can all be proud. It will become one of the largest taxpayers in South Windsor, will preserve and make jobs, and will flourish with a new state-of-the-art Geysler's, enabling that family-owned grocery store to compete against the many area grocery stores, including the one following us on the, your agenda tonight. We are, and so I'm going to leave it at that because we don't want to get into rehashing any of the prior testimony. So we're going to leave it at that, and there are no other formal presentations by our side, by the applicant or their team. So we're available for any questions you may have or town staff, and we look forward to hearing comments from the public. Thank you, Chairman Pasakonis.
Okay. And you'll be present for the whole evening, so we will hold your questions until the commissioner's turn. Okay?
Okay. Thank you very much.
Michelle, is there anything new that you want to offer? You all set?
No, I don't have anything new from planning. Just that you do have a letter for the record from the chief of police related to the sidewalk issue, to be.
Yep. That'll be read during the public.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Okay. Engineer Jeff Doolittle, any, anything new you want to add? Please, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Nothing new from an engineering perspective, just a comment on the sidewalk proposed, or a proposed sidewalk along Sullivan Avenue. The town would expect the property owner to maintain that sidewalk. There would not be a town-maintained sidewalk.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. So at this time, if there's nothing else from the applicant, we're going to go right into members of the public. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on this item tonight? Please step forward.
You know, I was just going to say, if you stop by me, I'll sign you in, then we don't have to keep cleaning, once you're speaking, then sign it. I'll sign you afterwards, then we don't have to keep cleaning my pen every time.
And you might want to tilt that down just a hair, the microphone.
Because I'm short. Thank you.
So it lines up.
Hi, I'm Mary Justine Hockenberry. I live at 16 Foxglove Lane in South Windsor. Last name is H-O-C-K-E-N-B-E-R-R-Y. Good evening, Chairman Pasakonis, Director of Planning, Michelle Leif, Town Engineer Jay Doolittle, and the P&amp;Z members. I'm here to speak about item application 21-11P, REESG NewCo South Windsor LLC, a request for a zone change. I am in favor of this zone change layout for the mixed-use development overlay zone for the property known as Sullivan Avenue Plaza, or as many residents in town know, Geysler's Plaza. The redevelopment of said plaza follows the conservation redevelopment master plan as of last January. I feel this is a great project for many reasons. This property is one of the biggest business eyesores in our town for many, many years. The revenue collected from this property is approximately $100,000. With the proposed development plan to clean up or redevelop the plaza includes keeping Geysler's as an anchor store and a number of other stores, parking lot being redone, 125-unit apartment complex. With this said, it is an increase of eight times of revenue coming into the town. We always are worried about our taxes raised. This $30 million project being paid by the developer in part by Geysler's is a win-win gain for the town. The 125 units will follow the guidelines of state statute to provide 10% affordable housing. This is a great plan. This real estate market in our town is thriving, and these units will be occupied almost immediately, a welcome step for our town. A few things I've heard, not enough room in our schools if families have school-aged children. Strawberry Fields residents feel it will be an eyesore to the north corner of their development. One, the schools, the Board of Ed, have the authority to make more room as they did a few years ago when an influx of 400 families came into town. This is not a P&amp;Z purview. This is important, South Windsor did not push the students away, we made room. Not-in-my-backyard concept is not a welcoming concept either. P&amp;Z has made many adjustments to other projects to make everyone happy and make the aesthetics of our town stay the same. I'm sure a $30 million project that a developer is willing to, willing to aid South Windsor to get rid of a blighted property will make changes or additions to their project. The message I get is, if we don't do this project, we'll stay an eyesore yet again, and for how long? With no revenue, because Geysler's will leave. Do, the other messages I get is, we don't support family-owned businesses, we don't want families to come into our town to live, we don't want more revenue to lower our taxes, nothing changes if nothing changes. It will be a sad day to not see this project go through. Thank you.
Okay. Hold on one minute. Commissioners, while she is up there, do you have any questions for her? Okay.
I have a question. You called the Geysler's property a blighted property?
It's, it has, it's an eyesore.
You called it a blighted, you were a town councilwoman, correct?
Yes.
Was this a blighted property?
No.
Okay. I'm just asking if they were under blight.
Thank you for asking that question. It is an eyesore and has been for more than 10 or 15 years.
Okay. All right.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, over here. This is not a question for you, this is a question for the chairman. Is it possible to ask the speakers to remove their masks? To me, it sounds like they're talking into a Dixie cup.
Yeah, and I agree with you. They're socially distanced away from everybody. Yeah, I think that would be fine.
Thank you.
While you're speaking.
Thank you. I'm fully vaccinated, but I was worried about the microphone.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Mr. Dickinson?
Yes, Robert Dickinson, now of 400 Seaberry Drive in Bloomfield. If the commission were to determine not to require the developer to install this sidewalk as per these preliminary plans because of high cost, then I would suggest that the developer extend the retaining wall to a sufficient height as shown in their design and leave other parts of the construction of the sidewalk to be done at a future time. This will make it possible when, if we complete other segments of this sidewalk all the way to town center, then going back and finishing this section would be possible. And of course, any right-of-ways that would, extensions that would be necessary. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Could you hold on one second, Robert? Just in case, commissioners, any questions? And Mike, you can hear me, right? Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Steve? Yeah.
Robert, I'm sorry, Steve has a question, so, my apologies. Steve has a question for you, and you can remove your mask if you.
I will do likewise. So if there is no possible, if they do not build the sidewalk that is being discussed, what are the options on the other side of Sullivan Avenue for biking and, you know, safer biking and riding on the street and then obviously walking pedestrians connecting up to town center?
Well, on the other side of the street, yes, I would assume that it would be possible to construct a sidewalk, but if you have to have bicycles and sidewalks or pedestrians having to cross back and forth across Sullivan Avenue, then it would hold up traffic more by having them go back and forth, plus there would be inherent danger in doing so. And I have seen, well, in construction of the East Coast Greenway going through Cheshire, they had a problem there, similar in cost, cost value, where they eventually spent the money to get it connected, once they had other portions that were of much less cost. And I would just hate to see this be in a situation where that 20 years from now, they couldn't do it because they didn't have enough right-of-way, or in this case, I guess they're going to have to be, build a retaining wall anyway to some height, but would ask them to extend that to the final necessary height, but leave the rest of it undone if it's determined by the commission that it is unreasonable to. by the commission that it is unreasonable to ask them to do the whole project.
Okay, and we will ask the applicant to comment on that when we get back to asking you questions on that proposal, just how much that makes your job easier by just not paving the sidewalk. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, gentlemen?
Good evening, Stephen King Jr., 926 Ellington Road. I'm actually reading this letter for Tony, but prior to that, though, I did have a question through you, Mr. Chair. Is it, I serve on a couple of other commissions, is it out of order for the commentary to go back and forth in regards to this public? The other commissions that I serve on, when the public speaks, it's just the public and the, you guys stay quiet.
On town council, that's their, that's the way that they handle their business. We handle it different.
Okay, because I serve on the WPCA, I serve on the Inland Wetlands, and when the public speaks, there isn't a back and forth. So is that, so you guys are the only ones that do that? I just want to be clear.
With COVID, we've modified our rules to make it as friendly as possible to encourage people to speak. So we're trying to give you the opportunity, and then if we have any questions, you know, because you're providing testimony. So if we have questions, it's only right that we should ask them. Generally, if we were doing our normal business, we would have people speak, they would sit down, everybody would speak, and then afterwards, when we got to commissioners, then the commissioners would ask specific individuals for additional comment, and they could go back and forth. But with people, due to COVID and restrictions in the building, they could be leaving, and then we lose that opportunity. So we've, I've modified this slightly to try and get as much communication as possible.
Understood, thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, my name is Tony, I forget how you pronounce this, Duarte, right? 210 Brook Street. I'm also the Chair of the South Windsor Democratic Committee. For the record, since 2017, we have been discussing that Geisler's Plaza is beyond an eyesore, is a disgrace to South Windsor, and I'm asking for our town officials about what can be done to improve not only Geisler's, but attract life to that plaza. My wife and I have been residents of South Windsor since 1996, and we live in the Eli Terry District. There is hardly a day when we do not drive down Sullivan Avenue. We are one of thousands of cars coming and going past that eyesore called Geisler's Plaza. People throughout the town complain about what this area has been allowed to become. What statement does this make about our community to have such a blighted area and such a heavily-travelled main artery through South Windsor? It screams frankly that we do not care about what the area looks like, nor do we care about the people who, like my wife and I, live near here and shop at Geisler's. You have this golden opportunity now to do the right thing. The plaza has been bought, a developer has been presented well throughout, inlay plans, and everyone has adhered to your requests. Time is fleeting, and delays will lose us the brass ring otherwise known as an incredible tax windfall in yearly taxes to South Windsor. Throwing away such an opportunity is not in the best interest of anyone in this town, it is a waste and drain of income. I urge you to delay no more, get this project started for the sake of South Windsor. Thank you. Again, just reading on behalf of Tony as he had to leave. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Well, you read a letter for somebody else, there's no real questions for him. Okay, please step forward.
Thank you for moving this to the front of the meeting and for continuing your hard work that's been going on for months. My name is Bill Myers, M-Y-E-R-S. I live at 1141 Strong Road, South Windsor, Connecticut. I look right across the meadow to Geisler's Plaza, or whatever we're going to call it. I will see the buildings. I mean, I'm a half mile away, but I'm right there. It's not a concern of mine. I lived in town since 1962. I remember my sister-in-law working at Poplar Market. I don't know if any of you ever heard of it, but it's the building that used to be Geisler's. My father-in-law, for at least a dozen years, well, for 26 years, ran the Recreation Department in town, and you may, you're, you probably remember when the Rec. Department was there, or if not, it was, the Recreation Department was there. But the view of the plaza has just gone downhill and downhill and downhill, to the point where we have a chance to win. It's not going to cost us anything, we're going to actually profit from it, and it will look new and beautiful. And I helped build the last three elementary schools, not personally with the shovel, but I happen to be the treasurer for all three referendums. I know what it means to put kids in buildings for schools. I taught at Pleasant Valley School for 25 years. We're not going to be concerned, I'm not concerned about new students being in town. Everything that I've heard and read, it'll be a very minimal addition of students to our current population. So I just urge you to say yes to this, continue to move this forward, as you already have, you've been moving this forward, and let's get it done. It's a win-win-win for all of us. So thank you for listening to my two cents.
Okay, commissioners, anything? Michael? You all set, Michael?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
The volume is really low.
Whose volume is low, Michael? Ours or yours?
Well, it's just the sound in general, it's very low. Usually, it's very loud when you have these online meetings, but tonight, I could barely hear it, it's why I'm pressing the headphones in my ears here.
Okay. Okay, next person who would like to speak, please step forward.
My name is Bill Jodas.
If you could speak into the microphone, please. Thank you.
Hello. Okay, that's better?
Stay in front of the microphone.
Try this.
This is what you're doing, you're coming over here.
All right.
And then you can't hear.
Are we good?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Bill Jodas, last name is spelled J-O-D-I-C-E. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I'll be brief, I've, as I've mentioned before, I know a special exception was given at Evergreen Walk to allow a grocery store. As a town, if we're going to add a grocery store that will compete with Geisler's, then as a town, we're obligated to help Geisler's be competitive. Evergreen Walk Grocery Store found that new location was beneficial because of the proximity to the apartments in Evergreen Walk. Geisler's has been in town for over 30 years, they deserve our support to allow apartments. I think this will be a great project for this area of the town, and I think you'll see redevelopment occur in the shopping center across the street, Sullivan Avenue. This is the first step, will change the entire feel of that area of the town. This new project will recreate many new jobs, and therefore, I support their application. Thank you.
Okay, commissioners, any questions? Thank you very much.
Okay.
Please step forward.
Joe Kennedy, 81 Allison Drive. First, I'd like to thank all the commissioners for their hard work through the pandemic. I watched your Zoom meetings, they were professional, and that's a good thing. I urge the commissioners to approve the zone change and the general plan application.
Joe, if you could tilt the microphone down a little bit more.
Thank you.
Just bend the end of it, bend the end of it.
Okay.
Yeah, much better. Thank you.
I also like to thank Peter DeMalle and his team. I think he worked good answering all the questions in the specs, and this is nice, this looks really nice, and Peter's a professional, and you guys, you asked tough questions, and he gave you the answers. I was also wondering, there was supposed to be a letter of support from the Economic Development Commission?
That was read at a previous meeting.
Okay, thank you. And I was going to say that you have the increase in tax revenue, and then finally, as a 21-year member of multiple town commissions, let us put the seal of approval on this $30 million revitalization project and let the free market take over. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions, commissioners? Okay, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Young lady with the mask?
Very, very short, young lady.
Yeah, that doesn't bend down there.
Should I hold it?
That's fine.
How's that? Is that cool? Okay, thank you very much. And good evening, Chairman Passakonis and members of the Planning and Zoning Committee. My name is Daria Plummer, and I live at 235 Orchard Hill Drive. My husband and I moved to South Windsor in 1967, and we lived in an apartment, believe it or not. It was carved out of somebody's house. We chose that apartment because we wanted to live here, and we could not afford a house. And it was only until we had worked, newly married, both had jobs in this area, I had a teacher in South Windsor, it was only until we earned enough money that we could afford to buy a house in town, then we moved up, and we have lived here for 54 years. And I'm glad we have, and I hope you're glad we have. I like living in South Windsor. Over the years, we have seen South Windsor grow and develop as a community where people want to live, do business here, and we've been recognized nationally because of our community. People come here, they want to come here, they don't flee here. We're a good place to live, and we're a good place to work. But I don't think we're in the seventh inning stretch with this project, and I don't think we're in the 11th hour. I think we're in overtime with the clock running almost out. I don't think there's any overtime remaining. The patience of everyone, and I'm sure it's you all, so, is strained. You've set the conditions for this project, conditions have been followed, and still you've been asking for more. Now, I'm telling you that this job, this whole project is about three things: jobs, revenue, and I heard an objection to the word "blight," but I have to tell you, before I came here tonight, I looked up the word "blight," and one of the definitions of it is neglected. And I do believe that the Geisler's Plaza, as we all call it, is a neglected property, not the store itself, although it needs enhancements, and they know it, and they plan on doing it if this can get done, but it is indeed a neglected, blighted-looking property. This project is about jobs that will come into town to build the entire plaza and to sustain it, jobs to renovate Geisler's, to expand it, and it's about the people who will shop the current restaurants and businesses on Sullivan, including the new businesses that will come to the plaza. This renovation is about economic livelihood. This project is also about bringing tax revenue into this town, revenue that you've heard mentioned from other speakers eight times. Eight times the current taxes that Geisler's now brings into South Windsor. Don't let that go. That's nearly $800,000 a year. This project also is going to bring in fees from sewer connections, building permits, land use, income revenues, that will bring in over another $700,000 to this community. Don't lose that in tax revenue. A previous speaker said, rather than the word "blight," Geisler's is an eyesore. It is. Like any spot on the floor, if you overlook that spot long enough in your kitchen or wherever it is, you think it's not there because you don't see it, but it is there. That eyesore is there. Everybody else sees the spot that comes into your house or your kitchen, everybody else sees what we see when we go by Geisler's. It is an eyesore, not the store itself, but that entire plaza that we fondly call Geisler's Plaza. It does not make a good neighbor, and it does not set a good image for this community. And frankly, this project is about doing what's right for a good neighbor, and Geisler's Supermarket is precisely that. Geisler's is a very, very good neighbor. I speak personally because over the last 12 years, I've worked personally with Geisler's management and the managers on food drives for this community, for needed items for the South Windsor Community Center, other than the food drives, and last year for the little food pantries that were put all around town by Hartford Bags of Love, local scout troops, and community volunteers. And most recently, Geisler's has been a darn good neighbor because they sponsored a veteran for a banner for the Patriotic Commission's Banner Project, and they're currently on display at the community center, and if you haven't seen them go, they are absolutely amazing. Geisler's is truly a community-based business. They care. They're good neighbors indeed, and delay and procrastination, this is not how we treat our good neighbors. Please don't kick this can down the road any longer, please don't put up any more diversions in place. I don't want Geisler's to leave, we as a community don't want Geisler's to leave, and they have told us, if this project doesn't go forward, they will. I'm asking you to follow your rules, to do your project, to do your job, and approve this project now. Throughout my 54 years in South Windsor, I have seen South Windsor as an absolutely welcoming community to people of all ages and to all incomes. I was one of those people 54 years ago. I expect nothing less of South Windsor now, or you. Thank you very much for listening, and Plummer is P-L-U-M-M-E-R. I didn't do that at the beginning, I apologize.
Okay, one second. Commissioners, if you have a question, a better way might be to put your light on, and then when the speaker gets done, I'll glance over to both sides. If I don't see any lights on, or I don't see our commissioner who's attending by WebEx or online, give me a wave frantically or something, then I'll assume there's no questions. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Lady in the front row? And when speakers get done, if they could exit and make room for other speakers? If you could just bend it down a little, right, not too much. Okay, thank you.
Good evening. Does that work?
Yeah.
Chairman Passakonis and commissioners, my name is Elaine Abouakar, A-B-O-U-A-K-A-R. I live at 23 Wapping Avenue here in South Windsor. I do, would like to take this time to thank all of you for your service to the community as you volunteer your time and energy to actively participate on this commission. I have been a property-owning taxpayer since 1991, and I have raised my four children in this town, and for the past decade, my occupation is full-time real estate agent, so I can certainly speak to the high demand that we have in this town for both sale and rental housing. In addition, I too have volunteered my time to the community, serving on the board of the South Windsor Chamber of Commerce, currently as past president. That's just a small glimpse of my history in town, and tonight, I speak to you as a resident. And over the past 30 years, I have witnessed many changes and growth in our hometown. I live within walking distance to the Geisler's Plaza and have taken many family strolls to Geisler's. I love Geisler's, it's been my go-to grocery store for as long as I've lived in town. Now, I've watched South Windsor grow and flourish with continued development in both our residential sectors and commercial areas, and as a local real estate agent who does work out in the field, I speak to residents regularly. I know firsthand we have high demand for more housing, particularly rentals here in this town. I speak with our retired and elderly homeowners, and so many of them have lived in their homes for 30 to 40-plus years. And when I ask them, "Where do you plan to go next?", the response that I hear often is, "There is no place else for me to go. I'm going to die in this house." Now, these are folks who do not require assisted living. They live in modest homes and would absolutely prefer maintenance-free rental housing. But it does not currently exist outside of Wapping Mews and Flax Hill, and neither of those locations are convenient to the retail restaurants and services that this plaza is offering. Another segment that is underserved are our college graduates. South Windsor is rated in the top 20 of Places to Live, Raise a Family, and we certainly have a fantastic education system. The bidding wars that I have witnessed for houses that go on the market in this town is phenomenal right now. Buyers are offering $30,000, $40,000, even $50,000 over the listing price to have the opportunity to live in South Windsor. And although this is great, what happens to our college graduates once they attain their four-year degrees? We want to retain our talent as they contribute to a thriving community. But where are they supposed to live? Are they supposed to move back into their parents' basement? So our college graduates and young professionals is another segment of the population that these apartment units would offer a place to call home. And I recall in a previous meeting here regarding the plaza, an expert provided data on the impact the apartments would have to the education population, and I believe that number was somewhere between 10 to 20. I don't have notes from there. And I do know that the town is currently in the midst of a multimillion-dollar renovation of all of our schools, which may be a different conversation for another day. But I find it hard to imagine that these new schools are unable to accommodate an additional 10 to 20 children spread out among them. And I do hope that possibly overcrowding our brand-new multimillion-dollar school system is not a viable excuse to deny this plan further. And again, perhaps that's a conversation for another day and time. So I do also understand that some of the abutting neighbors have expressed concern about their views. Again, as a real estate agent, I can tell you that in a town of South Windsor, our views do not typically add value to the property. South Windsor does not offer waterfront property views, mountaintop views, nor do we have city views. The only views that I can see surrounding the abutting neighbors are trees, and I'm sure that screening, buffering, and attractive landscaping are all part of the master site plan once this piece has been approved. The buyers flocking to South Windsor are not seeking views. They're seeking a great place to live. This development will certainly increase the values. However, if the plaza is left to further deteriorate, that will certainly impact all of our values negatively. Mixed-use developments that attractively blend commercial real estate along with residential real estate make sense in this day and age. If the apartments are not approved, the entire redevelopment of this plaza fails, then what will become of the plaza? And I see two possible scenarios: to become a further blight on this town or to be turned into yet another large-scale distribution center. And I would hate to see Sullivan Avenue and South Windsor in general turned into an oversized industrial park. So I do support the Sullivan Avenue Plaza mixed-use development plan in its entirety, and I encourage all of you to support this pivotal plan in our community as well. As Daria said, Geisler's has been a great neighbor. They're a huge asset to our town, and I would love to see us support Geisler's. In preparing for coming to see you tonight, I also did do some door-knocking in my neighborhood. I live in the neighborhood, actually called that, off of Sullivan Avenue. There are 52 homeowners there. I was able to speak with 20 today before I left. And I do have an exhibit to present. Not quite sure where the camera is to show it, but I can certainly email it. And the exhibit is 20 signatures of the folks that I did speak to in my neighborhood that are also in support of this redevelopment plan.
Okay. If you could just provide that to
Sure.
our staff?
Sure.
Any... Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Wagner has his light on now.
Pardon me. I didn't quite get the rules down yet. I'm sorry for bothering you to come back. One of the issues we've heard from the residents of Strawberry Fields is that they're going to have their... Part of their view will now be one of these large buildings. What, in your experience as a real estate agent, what impact does that have on at least the solubility of a place that looks at an apartment development 100 feet or so away?
Currently, here in this market in South Windsor, it is a seller's market, and that has zero impact. There's not enough housing to meet demand, and that will not matter to a potential buyer. They would be happy for the opportunity to buy that property.
Okay, thank you very much. I understand that's not the only issue these people have, but thank you for answering that question.
Okay. Mayor Paterna?
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Margaret Shea, 266 Abbey Road, South Windsor, Connecticut. S-H-E-A. I'm in favor of this application tonight for three quick reasons. Most of the people that spoke before me are hitting it on the head, basically. But I believe it's a perfect location for multi-use development right now. I also believe that the tax revenues that the town will receive from these folks will be great. There's no reason to overlook that. And also, I think the opportunity for Geisler's to expand their facility and make it bigger and better, like their other facilities, I'm sure you've seen, is a great opportunity for them, and it's just a great opportunity for that whole plaza in general. So I thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you very much. Gentleman in the back with his head up.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for this time to speak. My name is Christopher Healy. I live at 6 Beals above Road. And I've been a citizen of South Windsor for 53 years. And in that 53 years, and also being a graduate of South Windsor High School as a class of 1986, I truly remember Sullivan Avenue at that time truly being a good business area in that not only did Geisler's Plaza also have a supermarket, two banks, the library, movie theater, a pharmacy, a hobby shop, and then on the other side, 7-Eleven, Best Eat Inn and that. But I'm going to save most of the history since I said that last year at that. And I'll also state that as the time has progressed and now the way Geisler's Plaza is now compared to then, and yet the other side of the street has been able to keep up with the Joneses, for lack of a better saying, with businesses still going in and out and thriving over on that side. I believe that this project would really revitalize the plaza with Geisler's as an anchor store and refurbished, and the whole area refurbished for new stores. And restaurants would truly bring in more and more business and money, tax dollars and otherwise, as well as with the apartments. And so I would totally support this project. And as an employee of Geisler's, I could tell you that I've had many customers state what they've... People have stated here, and probably you've had, will have more customers up front here stating the same things. But I've also had out-of-state customers state that... I mean, out-of-state, out-of-town customers state that something should be done with that plaza since it is an eyesore. And looking at the plans and that that we had at the registers stating that it would be beautiful and that something does need to be done, and that would be probably the perfect thing for that. So I really encourage you to let's continue, get this and get this done as soon as possible.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Gentleman in the front row here.
Hello, Planning and Zoning Commission and Town of South Windsor, Connecticut. My name is Alan Cavignaro, and I live on 83 Pineup Drive and part of the graduating class of 2020. What we can all agree on today is that, through many citizens' words, is that the current plaza and property is an eyesore. The current state of this property could be defined as dilapidated, and the South Windsor community has waited far too long just to see this project fizzle out. Some of these details, which many know about, are the renovations for the plaza itself, but more notably, the 125 apartment units being proposed. 10% of those being designated for affordable living due to regulations. However, there have been some concerns on the lasting impact of these apartments being built. The concern of seeing the top floor of these apartments from the neighboring community have been addressed and repeated many times throughout these meetings. Not only have there been a natural... Not only will there be a natural barrier that will grow over time, but the elevation of the first floor is much lower than the elevation of the neighboring community. It is important to note that there will be a 50-foot barrier between neighborhoods to ensure separation, and the concern with the traffic has been minimal. It has been stated many times, and I quote, "The project is generally sufficient to accommodate traffic generated by the proposed development." Additional concerns raised by others in the town have been the impact on the school system these 125 apartment units would have. However, what should be understood is that the majority of these units will be studio and one-bedroom units, meaning these would be unlikely destinations for a family to live, for the most part. Research and prior meetings have stated that the number of children that might be of school age in these 125 apartment units would roughly be around nine children. Split that among Eli Terry, TE, and the high school, and the impact would be very minimal on the school system. The economic impact of the project would benefit everybody in the town. Currently, Geisler's pays roughly $94,000 a year in taxes to the town with the proposed renovations and units being built. This could increase nearly eight times, as mentioned prior in other meetings and today, of its current $94,000 a year. These figures also include the jobs retained at Geisler's, and it also includes jobs added through construction, new businesses, and the management of the units itself. These facts back up the decision by the Economic Commission for a unanimous favorable recommendation of this application and should not be taken lightly. On a more serious note, what should be considered is that we cannot stonewall this project any further. If we continue to hinder around and add new requirements and regulations at this stage of the process, it will only hurt the odds of this passing and retaining Geisler's in the town of South Windsor. It was stated through hearings in 2019, if this application does not go through, there's a chance we could lose Geisler's in South Windsor. And again, that is why it is important, more than ever now, to address these concerns now before it becomes too late. The town would be losing the tax income of currently $94,000 a year and the apartment units and the income that it would gain from that as well. Finally, if we look back to the 2019 educational playcare lawsuit the town faced, during that time, it costed up to $57,000. A lawsuit Planning and Zoning was cautioned about, one we were told the town would lose if the application was denied. Going against your own tax amendment could be a lawsuit waiting to happen, potentially, costing our taxpayers money and not bringing in new tax revenue and providing jobs. There have been many years, meetings, planning, and anticipation for this project alone with the neighbors of the property and the town itself. It is too late now to respond to concerns and further impede this application. The town needs to move forward, and that is why I ask Planning and Zoning to vote in the affirmative tonight. Geisler's has been a fantastic neighbor to South Windsor, like mentioned before, and it is time we repay the favor. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Gentleman with the blue shirt? Blue.
It's been a long day. Sorry for a couple shirts I had on. Thank you, Commissioner, for giving us a chance to speak tonight. My name is Robert Viteri. I live at 49 Wood Pond Road here in South Windsor. I've been here for about 37 years now. I've watched a lot of different projects come up in this town. I've watched Stop &amp; Shop Plaza be built. I've watched Evergreen Walk be built. I've seen a lot of others. But this, Geisler's Plaza, has been an area that we frequented a lot, my family and others. To watch it deteriorate to what it has deteriorated into now is just embarrassing all the way around. It was always a good place to go. The store is still a wonderful place to go, but to see that surrounding area is just not pleasant at all, as everybody's been saying. I think if you step back for a minute and just look at the 30,000-foot level here, something's going to happen with that plaza. It's either going to become what this project is, which I think is the perfect answer. It's going to become, as someone else had mentioned, the next Amazon location or something like that for trucks and all sorts of traffic to go on. I doubt if anybody's going to suddenly overhaul the whole area, plant trees on it, and make it go back into a forest again. So when you really look at the possibilities of what this could become, this project makes so much sense. It's in the right spirit for the town. It's in the right spirit for the community, for the town that what Money Magazine called "the 12th most desirable place to live", and this is consistent with everything that they said was positive about this town. So I think going forward, it absolutely makes sense. I hope all of you could see it the same way as it appears to all of us and go forward with the project. Again, thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you very much. Gentleman, front row.
Can you hear me? Good evening. Good evening. My name is Eric Nilson. I live at 18 Fox Hill Road. Aside from being a member of this community, I am also one of Geisler's fourth-generation owners. So we have been in business for 98 years, and 34 of them, we have been here in South Windsor. My grandparents bought the store from the Armadas and passed it down to my parents and my uncle and my aunts, and now it's on to us. Living a mile away, doing this store is my dream. I really want this bad. And so that's why I need the apartments there so that we can have the advantages that other places have of having close proximity customers in the surrounding parts of our area to look great. I need the people to want to come in there. Anybody that moves in right now is not going to want to come into our store. I need to change that. I'm asking for this to be approved the way it is so that we can take care of the inside of the store and we can run the business that we need. Down the street, there's plenty of competition, and I know there keeps being more and more come in by bigger companies that are owned by who knows where, and I just need this to go through. Thank you.
Commissioner Wagner has a question.
Yeah. Actually, just a comment. You guys took us through COVID. You had the best of all the services for curb service. We'd get a call in the morning after putting our order in. Do you mind substituting one brand of milk for another? The other stores just, you know, didn't give it to you. So you guys really, really came for us, and I... Well, as everyone knows, I am supporting this project.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Foley, did you?
Eric, just a quick question. I mean, looking at your other property... How many stores do you guys have? Eight?
We have seven stores.
Seven?
Yeah.
And as I Google Earthed all the properties, just trying to do my homework, and I noticed all the other plazas that you guys are involved in or that you're a tenant or owner of, they're full, they're landscaped well, pretty full.
Yeah.
Very well. I checked them all. And the one component that I noticed is, out of the seven, none of them have housing or apartments in your plaza, but you're thriving. So... I... Listen, you guys are a great neighbor, and nobody wants to lose you guys. I just look at this component, and I'm asking, "Do you own this plaza?"
No.
You don't. So the other... How many of the other plazas do you own?
We do not own any.
So it's basically good landlords?
Yeah.
Okay. And no housing component attached to the rest of them, correct?
They are trying in summers right now. They haven't gotten it all the way through, but...
But right now? But right now, none of them. Correct.
There is apartments nearby on some of the stores, but not attached to it.
Okay, thank you very much. The gentleman with the pink, peaches, peach-colored...
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is David Chung, C-H-U-N-G. I live at thirty-six Swapping Avenue. I'm a younger resident here. I've only lived in South Windsor for eight years. I was formerly a resident of Granby, so I might have a little bit different perspective. One of the things I did move to South Windsor and where I am, my house, is because there's a Geisler's. Granby has a Geisler's. I was in there since I was a baby, crawling in their aisles. So Geisler's, having them move away or leave the area would be definitely a thing that would be a negative in my book. And the fact of the matter is, is Geisler's has supported the town and has been here for a long time, and it'd be a shame for them to go. The plaza itself, I do see as a blight. It's neglected, the current landlord has neglected it, and it's gotten worse in just the eight years I've been here, which is a short period of time. Personally, I am a design, retail designer. I work in high-end residential, commercial design. The mixed-use properties I've worked on is like Blueback Square in West Hartford, Fanae District in South Beach, Miami, Hudson Yards in New York City. So I've worked on mixed-use projects, I can see where they succeed. I am a fan of mixed-use projects. With that being said, I don't think even that plan maximizes the potential for a mixed-use project. But all said and done, I think it should go forward. Again, I don't think that project maximizes the potential or maximizes the longevity of what it is. It's not as much of a nexus as it could be, but again, I still support this project. And, you know, there are some comments regarding the, you know, the education factor, the kids. As other people have said, there's going to be a lot of studio apartments, you know, and when I moved into South Windsor, I was looking at houses. Why? Because I was looking, and where I am is more affordable houses, smaller houses. Having an apartment would bring other people like me who are looking at, you know, more affordable, either single studios or smaller houses and something that's affordable. South Windsor, the prices of houses have gone up over the time, and having something that's affordable for young professionals like me would be great. Bringing more people like me who just like to live here and contribute to this, you know, town and city would be a great thing. All towns grow, and like I said, I'm from Granby. They renovated the school, and three years later, they were out of room in their own school. And yet they still, now it's been, I don't know, fifteen years, and they've still figured a way to accommodate all their students. So whether you are this town or another town in Connecticut, we've, every single town has issues with overcrowding and figuring out how they're going to manage, you know, their growing population. Every town grows. I mean, it's just a fact of life. So the concerns people have of, you know, additional students, it's going to be negligible. First, I believe it'll be negligible. And number two, you're going to have to deal with it regardless. I mean, if we took this housing development and moved it somewhere else in South Windsor, you'd still have the same issue. So regardless if it's in this location in the Geisler's Plaza or somewhere else in South Windsor, you're in the same boat. All right? And pretty much, like I said, I live five minutes, I walk, I walk there. And regardless, even if it's not at, I believe, at its full potential, this development, how it's laid out, anything that's redeveloping this property would be a plus, because right now, it is a blight. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, I'm going to start from my right side of the room. Jen, you're here as our liaison, correct? Okay, the gentleman with the suit, you're part of the next application, correct or no? Oh, would you like to speak? Please step forward.
Thanks. Bob Rybick, President and CEO of Geisler's Supermarkets. Nice to see you all in person.
If you could speak up just a little, please, thank you.
Sure. Last name's R-Y-B-I-C-K. So good to see you all in person and not on Zoom again. As my cousin Eric mentioned, you know, it's been one of our dreams to redevelop this store. I started working in that store when I was sixteen-year-old, sixteen-years-old in high school. And I've seen it go through several different phases. So now that our generation is in charge of this, you know, we're, we're maybe paying the price for not having done this sooner. I know it certainly was our intention to do that, and I certainly don't want to see us leave town. I know there's a lot of discussion around apartments. We can slice and dice the numbers any which way. You know, we can talk about which of our stores are successful more than others, and a lot of them do have walking traffic, high density around those particular stores. And the reason being is that as an independent, we draw from two to three miles around our store. In this particular location in South Windsor, behind our store, there will never be any houses, there's a large land preserve. So in order for us to support the kind of business that is necessary to fund all of developments that we need to do in that store to make it a world-class store or a flagship store, as we've called it before, one that could possibly rival what is suspected to be going in down in Evergreen Walk, we can do that with the right amount of density around our store, and that's what this provides us with. So I know it's easy to knock the apartments, I know it's easy to say everyone loves Geisler's and they want us to stay, but there really is a synergistic effect here. Earlier today, I was on with a few people in the town of Windsor, and Windsor used to have a lot of walking traffic. But the downtown is not what it used to be. They built a large apartment buildings over by the train station. But because there's nothing in the middle, there's no additional complementary businesses, all of those people get in their car, they drive past my store to where they can do all of their shopping and needs together. So there's a lot of things that have to work together for a project to be successful. And I think that having living and dining and shopping experiences all in one place is what will truly make our store successful and present a nice opportunity for redevelopment in South Windsor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Gentleman with the black shoes? Oh, you did? Okay. Lady with the red mask?
Good evening, thank you for receiving us. My name is Liliana Serrano. I am a South Windsor resident since two thousand seventeen. I am a South Windsor business owner since two thousand nineteen. I came here today not just like a South Windsor resident and business owner, but also like somebody that came from out of the States and have a point of view like from the outside, not as like every South Windsor resident. In two thousand and sixteen, when we were traveling and we decided to move our family to the United States, we were crossing from New York to Massachusetts, and we get into Connecticut. I never in my life heard or even hear about Connecticut. When I came here, I find a very interesting state. And when we start our research, and I had a friend, she used to live in, she lives in South Windsor. And when I came to the town, I said, like, I really like this place. And for me, it was really hard at the beginning to find a house here for rent or even to buy. The market was crazy. You put a house on the market and it will take hours and the house was sold. So I started making the research, and it was because of the good schools, because you have all the services right around the corner. Whatever you want to find is right around the corner. So that makes us to decide to raise our family in South Windsor, to put a business in South Windsor. Since I came here, the Geisler's Plaza has been a eyesore. I always ask why, because even if it was a eyesore, every time I went to Geisler's, I find fresh produce. And it keeps, I was keeping going and going, even every time I went there and I said, like, oh my God, the parking lot is a disaster, but they are so good and they are a family-owned business, and they are always open to give back to the community. They didn't know me, they didn't know what I do. Every time we have something to ask for, to give to the community, they are open to give. Out of that, I know how uncomfortable it is to be open to new developments in cities. And I'm telling you like a person who comes to live in a fourteen-million-people city, big cities, where any change makes struggles. So as you say, it's not fair, like, there's no other plazas where you can combine business and apartments. Okay, so why not to be open for innovation? Why, this is the best market to do it. When you have a town where a house can be sold in hours, I'm sure that development would bring a lot of good things to this town. So I really think it's responsible to approve this project and get good revenue and bring to the town what is needed and also support Geisler's to keep giving back to the community and stay in town. Thank you.
Thank you. Gentleman with the white mask?
Good evening. My name is Ryan Nilson, N-I-L-S-S-O-N, of fifteen fifty-four Main Street. I'm also a fourth-generation owner of Geisler's. My brother, Eric, spoke earlier, and my cousin, Bob. We are very good neighbors within the community, we're heavily involved. I myself was a member of the Board of Directors of the Chamber of Commerce for about six years with multiple people that have spoken here already. You know, we've gone, with everything that's been said by previous speakers, I don't need to rehash everything. But with the tax revenue coming in, with, with that, we can't, that can't be ignored. Eight times the current tax revenue is just money that this town, you know, desperately needs right now. And I'll, you know, actually be fairly brief. We're very good neighbors, we're heavily involved in the community, and as a fourth-generation owner, we, as a fourth generation, need to put our stamp on our business. We want to, we want to take the business that our parents, our aunts, our uncles, you know, laid down for us and, you know, grow it, show what a new store can look like, can, how it can run, and, you know, how our dream of what a new store looks like and how it can be successful in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Gentleman with the black mask?
Good evening. My name is John...
Could speak into the microphone, maybe just raise it up a little.
Good evening. My name is John Beryuter, B-E-R-E-U-T-E-R, D four Saint Mark's Circle. You may recall the words of Francis Urquhart. Nothing lasts forever. Even the longest, the most glittering rain must someday come to an end. When I moved here, South Windsor had many apartment complexes. I had lived in apartments almost all of my life. I liked mine. Then, real estate boomed. And apartment complexes became condominiums. Buy a house or buy a condo? I bought a condo. South Windsor likes to be a rural town. When a developer proposed a mall straddling South Windsor and Manchester, South Windsor said, "No," because it would ruin the rural atmosphere. Buckland Hills Mall was built nearby in Manchester. Two-lane Buckland Road became four-lane to handle the heavy traffic from the north to the mall. Manchester provided the fire, police, and town services for the mall. Manchester collected the property taxes. South Windsor collected some traffic tickets. Years later, a modern-day rendition of a downtown shopping district was built. Evergreen Walk in South Windsor. Now, South Windsor could provide the services and collect the taxes. Apartments are once again appearing. Witness the ones near Evergreen Walk. They are needed by young people coming home or moving here to start their careers. They may buy a condo or a house, but not for a while. Retirees may tire of maintaining their homes or no longer be able to. They may like an apartment in their hometown where someone else takes care of things. The Sullivan Avenue Plaza once was a successful small shopping center filled with local businesses. Today, Geisler's is all that remains. Geisler's plan would provide an expanded and improved supermarket, becoming its flagship store. Apartments for the young, walk-ups and old, elevators, a clubhouse and pool, a quick-service restaurant. Increased tax revenue to South Windsor. If denied, Geisler's may well leave. Nothing lasts forever.
Is there questions? Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, I think everybody that's in person from the public has spoken. We'll read some letters. And Stephanie will go first.
Okay. Dear P and Z, I'm writing to voice my concerns of the proposed Geisler's Plaza. While I am in full agreement that this plaza needs to be renovated, I agree with the shops and restaurants, but have concern over the proposed apartments. In the past few years, we have had new apartments built in South Windsor. These apartments do house families that attend our school system. I would strongly urge you to contact the Board of Ed to see the number of students we are currently educating from Andrews Way and one seventy-five Oakland. If the apartments are approved, we're looking at more families entering our school system, especially with the high number of two-bedrooms you are proposing. Sometimes all it takes is one or two students in a grade to put the numbers over to make it necessary to create a new classroom. It can be a costly endeavor. I would also like to know the definition of luxury. If you could let the public know what amenities will be available under that description. I was told by a town council member that the apartments at one seventy-five Oakland would be luxury apartments. The apartments would be for the member, would be for member of our community that are looking to downsize. While those apartments are nice, they are far from luxury. There is no covered parking, no clubhouse, or common area, no swimming pool, recreation area, no additional storage. How will these apartments be different? I hope you consider my comments. As an employee of the South Windsor School System, I am omitting my name. In the event, any information in this letter is a conflict of interest. Thank you for your consideration.
Okay, dear Commissioners, as your task is not an easy one, the Strawberry Fields Association wishes to acknowledge your efforts over the last several weeks in providing a fair hearing to our owners. Our sense is that you have understood our concerns and that you will give them weight during your deliberations on this zone change application and also during any future design reviews. We continue to believe that it will be very difficult for the developer to meet the buffer regulations along our entire shared property line, given the planned proximity and height of the buildings, Building D in particular. We followed Chairman Passakonis's comments with interest regarding changes to the buffer area. These changes could be part of the solution. If the application is approved, we stand ready to work together with the applicant, representative, the commission, and Michelle Leip on the evaluation of the detailed design of the buffer zone between our properties. Thank you again for your consideration. Strawberry Fields Association. Strawberry Fields Association. Michael McMath, President. Elaine Anderson, Vice President. John Hawkins, Secretary. Jim Greason, Treasurer.
This next letter was referenced by, is from the Chief of Police, Christian Lindstrom. Dear Mr. Commissioner and members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, it has recently come to my attention that the Planning and Zoning Commission has considered requiring the developers of the Geisler's Plaza project to construct a sidewalk extending from the plaza to Strawberry Lane. My understanding is that this sidewalk would hopefully link Strawberry Fields to the redeveloped Geisler's Plaza. As the local traffic authority, I feel compelled to share my concerns about this sidewalk because, as presented, it brings with it several safety concerns. Regardless of what engineering might need to take place to expand the surface adjacent to the roadway above, hot leathers, it would leave a high and dangerous drop-off that would need to be protected with tall, possibly unsightly barriers to the ground below. The proposed sidewalk would also invite pedestrian crossing at or near Sullivan Ave. and Ayers Road, which is a state road with an existing guardrail already signed for, quote, "no pedestrian crossing," unquote. The proposed sidewalk would also theoretically end at Strawberry Lane, which is a section of state roadway where pedestrian movements and crossings would be unregulated, which would leave users for no safe place to proceed or cross the street. My understanding is that plans are already in the works to physically link Strawberry Fields to Geisler's Plaza by adding to the existing trail network away from the roadway. This alternative would accomplish the aforementioned objective of linking Strawberry Fields to Geisler's Plaza without creating the above safety concerns. At this time, I fear that building a sidewalk running from Geisler's Plaza to Strawberry Lane could create several unintended factors secondary to this length of sidewalk that could, in fact, end up compromising pedestrians' safety. Feel free to contact me with additional questions or concerns. Very truly yours, Christian Lindstrom, Chief of Police.
Okay, Commissioners, back in November two thousand nineteen, the Town of South Windsor Economic Development Commission unanimously approved Supporting Design Professionals' request for a zoning text amendment to add new Section five point one zero Sullivan Ave. Mixed-Use Development Overlay Zone, which includes purpose, site, design requirements, and general standards to allow for compatible residential and commercial mixed-use developments to revitalize properties fronting on Sullivan Avenue. On January twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty, Town of South Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission approved Design Professionals' zoning text amendment by a five-two vote, with Commissioners saying they wanted Geisler's to stay and are willing to take a chance with apartments. Another Commissioner stated it was their belief that more apartments are needed in town, given the change in what younger people are looking for in housing. And finally, the Chairman at the time made a friendly amendment to add such S-A-M-U-D, Sullivan Ave. Mixed-Use Development Overlay Zone are intended to revitalize substandard or blighted properties. In front of you this evening, you have a request for a zone change from General Commercial Zone to Sullivan Avenue Mixed-Use Development Overlay Zone, in which the Town of South Windsor Economic Development Commission supported with a letter, just like we did for the zoning text amendment that you approved on January twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty. I hope you will remember how you voted on January twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty, and to vote tonight to support the zone change requested from R.E.E.S.G. Newco South Windsor LLC, so that we can continue to bring positive economic development to South Windsor. Sincerely, Paul Burnham, Chairman, Town of South Windsor Economic Development Commission.
This is from Philip Richards at Copper Ridge Road. I would like to convey my support for the revitalization of the Geisler's Plaza. The current plaza is an eyesore and a blight on the town. There is no other area in town that is so desperately in need of revitalization than this. The continued delay of this approval is disparaging to the residents that want to see the town take action to address this. P and Z appears to be adding unnecessary and unrequired burdens on this development and continues to cause delays. Further disenfranchising this developer could cause this plaza to remain untouchable by this and other developers for years to come. This area is well-suited to this form of development and would provide a stalwart South Windsor business, Geisler's, an opportunity to compete and thrive instead of being bypassed due to a poor perception of the plaza where the grocer is located. I urge you to approve this project and allow it to proceed. Best regards, Philip Richards.
Dear Planning and Zoning, I am concerned resident and taxpayer of South Windsor. I am in favor of this Geisler's renovation and mixed-use usage plan on Sullivan Avenue for many reasons. Replace the blighted appearance of that entire area. Add a variety of housing options for younger families and professionals. Maintain the presence of our good and deserving neighborhood grocer, Geisler's. Provide jobs, provide an important source of income to the town's tax base. Thank you for your attention. Judith Goldstein.
Dear Mr. Passakonis, as a lifelong resident of South Windsor, I have had over seven decades to watch our town grow and evolve. I fully support the planned redevelopment of the Geisler's Plaza area on Sullivan Ave. It will add value, literally and figuratively, to our town, adding apartment housing, preserving our only local supermarket, and enabling an easily accessed retail center, too. I urge your commission's approval of this development project. Douglas Rothwell, six twenty Ellington Road.
I'm a business owner in town and would like to see this application approved. The proposed location, in my opinion, is currently an eyesore and borders on blight. The proposed project would not only clean up that area, but would also generate additional tax revenue for the town. I also believe that if this project goes forward, Geisler's Supermarket, which, by the way, has been in town over twenty-five years, would commit to a complete store renovation and expansion. I would hope the town is willing to help local businesses and property owners, not just large national corporations. I see this project as a win-win situation for the town and strongly recommend it to be approved. Regards, Bernie Morissette, Electrical Systems Technologies LLC, four oh one Chapel Road, South Windsor.
Dear Mr. Passakonis, I'm writing to express my full support for the zone change as currently before the South Windsor PZC to allow the Sullivan Ave Plaza Mixed-Use Development Proposal to proceed. I particularly support the inclusion of the affordable housing component that is part of this plan. Thank you, Mike Samon, fifty Ash Road.
Dear Mr. Passakonis, I'm writing to express my full support for the zone change as currently before the South Windsor PZC to allow the Sullivan Avenue Plaza Mixed-Use Development Proposal to proceed. I particularly support the inclusion of the affordable housing component that is part of the plan. Thank you, Patricia Samon, fifty Ash Road.
To PZC Chairman Passakonis, I'm writing in support of the proposed redevelopment of the Geisler's Plaza, which is a project that has the full and unanimous bipartisan backing of the Economic Development Commission, and as well as so many members of the South Windsor community. Over the past few years, there has been continuous new residential and commercial development on farmland and open space in South Windsor, while the Geisler's Plaza remains unsightly and dilapidated. Without this redevelopment, it will remain a blighted area, and we will lose a grocery store that has been a mainstay in town for decades. This is a commercially zoned area. With the proposed zoning change, the town would benefit from an increased tax revenue as well as creating a mixed-use property that I feel provides a positive change to what is currently there. Current proposed plan offers many great new businesses and includes much-needed affordable housing. I feel the zone change and general plan application should be approved tonight, so the town and developer can move forward with this project. I strongly believe that not doing so would be a great loss to the town. Regards, Mindy Lewis, six eighty-one Chapel Road.
Dear Mr. Passakonis, I'm writing to express my support for the revitalization of the Geisler's Plaza. As you know, this plaza has been an eyesore for many years and does not reflect the character of our community. The plans to revitalize this plaza will reinvigorate business in the area, not just in the plaza. Moreover, the addition of apartments will provide much-needing housing options in our community while preserving the character of South Windsor. Without the upgrades to this property, we will potentially lose a grocery store and will be left with a mostly vacant, dilapidated property. Thank you for your consideration. David Basil, ten thirty Ellington Road.
I'm writing in support of the Geisler Plaza development and the development of the new Sullivan Ave Plaza. This will be an economic boon to the town, resulting in increased economic activity, improvement of a blighted area, and increased tax revenue to the town. I would first like to commend the work of the Planning and Zoning Commission over the past few years, as you have been a key component in making South Windsor one of the most desired towns to live in Connecticut. Unfortunately, the Geisler's Plaza remains a significant blemish on our otherwise jewel of a town. Currently, Geisler's pays roughly ninety-four thousand a year in taxes. Once this project is completed, the tax revenues for the property will increase roughly eight times the amount to a projected seven hundred and eighty thousand in revenue for the town. If we want to hold, continue to hold the line on tax increases while maintaining the current level of service offered by the town, the best approach is to increase our tax base, both in terms of commercial development as well as attracting and retaining residents in town. Conversely, if this project does not move forward, we run the risk of Geisler's leaving and nothing being done with the property, losing the tax revenue we do have. Approving the development will be, will keep property taxes low while maintaining the great level of service and education. Please support increasing revenues for the town, keeping the tax rate low by supporting this development. Ross Giampredo, one twenty-two Pine Knob Drive.
Dear South Windsor Planning and Zoning members, it has come to my attention that support is needed for the new Sullivan Avenue Plaza, which will be anchored by a redesigned Geisler's flagship store. I would like to add my support for the new plaza. When my husband and I moved to town thirty-four years ago, there were businesses in the Sullivan Avenue Plaza. While the appearance of the plaza was not great, it was an area town residents utilized for a variety of services. Today, however, it is distressing and embarrassing to drive past this blighted area. It is my belief that blight begets more blight, so you can understand why many residents, myself included, were excited about the project, prospect of developing this area town. The plans presented to Planning and Zoning seem to be very respectful of the quality development we have come to appreciate in South Windsor. This new development will show that South Windsor residents not only care about the aesthetics of our town, but about the importance of providing housing for diverse needs. Yes, we have beautiful developments such as Strawberry Fields, whose requests for visual separation from the new plaza are being addressed. Let us also have beautiful developments that help those who would like to benefit from South Windsor's accepting community, but not in a position to purchase housing. Remember, South Windsor cares and respects everyone. Please support the development plan currently presented. Sincerely, Barbara Madera, twenty-nine Highview Road, South Windsor.
And I believe that concludes the public comment. So, at this time, I am gonna open it up to Commissioners. I'll start with Commissioner Bernstein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple comments. First, Design Professionals. Seems to me you've addressed everything we've thrown at you, and I want to thank you. I think that needs to be said. Secondly, at the last public hearing, I made some comments regarding sidewalks, and I was somewhat dismissive, and I want to amend that. I went back and looked at our plan of conservation and development, and indeed sidewalks is something that we aspire to have in our town as much as possible. As a matter of fact, in the plan of conservation and development, it references a survey that was done where residents of the town identified sidewalks as something that was a big miss. That survey was done in two thousand eleven, so we've had ten years to try and catch up, and I guess the way I look at it is, this is an evolving thing. As I look at this particular issue, I guess I ask myself, whose responsibility is it? And I think it's a combination of developers and the town, where and when it makes sense. It seems to me that that would be the way to get the development of sidewalks throughout the town as, as we would like, so something to take under consideration. The last thing I want to say is, I want to address the public record regarding this conversation that we always seem to have around the development and how housing will impact our schools. And I think it's a fair debate to have. I think it's an interesting discussion to have. A lot of information about our student population has been shared with the Planning and Zoning Commission, but my particular point of view is, we should not be making decisions about that without input from the Board of Education. I would not want the Board of Education to be making decisions about land use without our input. So, to this issue of where, whether the apartments will generate five, or ten, or twenty-five more students that we have to educate, unless the Board of Education comes to me and says, "We can't educate these kids," I think it's appropriate for us to move forward with a housing project. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Wagner.
Thank you. At the end of the last hearing, I, I asked what we wanted the applicant to address, and that was mainly the sidewalk and staircase issues and, that we asked them, and that's what they addressed. I appreciate all of the supporting letters and comments, and the few people who brought concerns as well. So, I'd like to get to the sidewalk issue. And actually, based on your presentation, there, there really are like several options that I'd like to go through one by one. So, let's start with the staircase. The idea of the staircase was that, and I think Chairman Passakonis and maybe other Commissioners were concerned, that students would somehow or other scurry up the, up the hill and cross the guardrail and cross Ayers Road to get to the high school, taking the shortest path. I think that's a legitimate concern. The staircase, though, would only encourage that unless we gets, you know, changes made to that traffic light that would, you know, have a, a pedestrian phase. So, I'm not in favor of building the staircase unless the town can somehow establish that there, that the, that the Department of Transportation would support the change to the intersection. So, I don't know. Michelle, have you heard anything, or has anybody heard anything from them as to how they feel about that?
I've heard nothing from the state of Connecticut, no.
So, if we were to require that staircase, I would say that we would have to make a contingent upon approval of a, of a change to the intersection to support pedestrian traffic. An appropriate change is not just to the, not just to build a staircase, but there'd have to be a landing and a gap cut and a guardrail, et cetera, et cetera. If, if we don't do anything there, we still have the concern that students will climb up the hill, go over the guardrail, scurry across Ayers Road on, on a very bad place, scurry across two Ayers Roads. So, I'm almost thinking that we need actually a fence there to make it undesirable to take that shortcut. So, I'll leave that up to maybe discussion by some of the other Commissioners. So, that's plan, that's Plan A. Oh, one other thing I would, I would ask you. Instead of a staircase, if you are, you know, we end up doing anything, would a serpentine walk up the hill, you know, meet the grading requirements? I think, I looked at, you know... I think I looked at, it wouldn't start from where the staircase is, but start at that corner, basically to the left on your picture. And I think you'd get a fairly nice serpentine walkway up there without having stairs. I don't know if you looked at that or...
There we go. For the record, Ben Wheeler from the Design Professionals, licensed landscape architect in the state of Connecticut. I just did some quick math, and with a thirty-foot grade change, which in that area, that's approximately what it would be from the parking lot up to the intersection of Ayers Road, to do a serpentine walk would need three-hundred-and-sixty feet of walk to be an ADA compliant ramp. That is not taking into account all the landings that would be needed, you know, which is required every thirty feet. So you add all those landings in, you need another twelve landings. So it's going to be over four-hundred feet of walk to do an ADA compliant ramp traversing that thirty feet. And that's in addition to the other length of sidewalk that is already being proposed for, you know, for this project, not alongside Sullivan Avenue.
So if you had to choose between a staircase and that four-hundred-feet walk, what would you choose?
I mean, neither one in the wintertime is an ideal situation. You know, certainly thirty feet of grade change is a lot to traverse. I think if I can bring into the fold your suggestion of a fence to discourage crossing that shortcut, I think that would be the best of the three options.
Okay, thank you. Let me move on to the next idea, which was to build a sidewalk all along there. The Police Commissioner, Commissioner Lindstrom, I think certainly had a lot of concerns with that, and I share most of his concerns, and he actually envisioned it ending at the entrance to Strawberry Fields. But in fact, if you were to build a sidewalk, it would, by definition of where your property ends, it would end at the property line, and then pedestrians would be, who choose to walk along there, would suddenly find themselves out on Sullivan Avenue, either walking with traffic or against it. But, I mean, it bothers me to think about people getting dumped out onto Sullivan Avenue at that particular location, when maybe what we need to do as a town is to really enhance what's going on on the other side of the street and take advantage of that. So that's a concern I have. If we did get the change to the traffic light and the sidewalk were to end at that point at Ayers Road, maybe with a easement to the property line that would allow for a sidewalk in the future if Strawberry Fields got a sidewalk, you know. To me, to build that sidewalk all the way to the end of your property line doesn't make sense. And then looking at your cross-section drawing here, I mean, frankly, I wouldn't vote for having that sidewalk built at all. I just think, as much as I love sidewalks, and I'm actually working on the cross-town bike trail with the South Windsor Walking Wheelways, so I like connectivity, I like all these things, but I just think this location is not working for a sidewalk. So I don't intend to support that aspect. So there, I think we're kind of back to the original plan, with possibly the back route through Major Donnelly. Now, have you had discussions of that, or where do we stand on that? Maybe the town engineer, Jeff, would know, or anybody know?
We have, if I may, again, for the record, Peter DiMali. We have walked a possible trail area. We haven't exactly defined where it might go with the environmental planner, Jeffrey Folger, who has been instrumental in all the long lengths of boardwalk and paths throughout the Major Donnelly Land Preserve, which is, what, one-hundred-and-ten acres, if my math is correct? The forty acres which came from Strawberry Fields and then the seventy from John Mitchell. So we could connect, it's maybe a thousand feet, but we've got to look at that. We have to, before we come to you with that, if you approve this application, we're going to go to the Wetlands Commission first, and we also have to address that with the Town Council and other bodies to see if they'll allow us to do it. So Wetlands is huge because it goes through primarily a wetland area. Could be three or four-hundred feet of boardwalk. The expense associated with that, the actual corridor, we figured out pretty much where it could go, but we'd have to get permission from the Wetlands Commission. So we plan on, my client is supportive of us addressing that with the town and the town staff, further with Mr. Folger and Michelle Leif and Jeff Doolittle, among others, director. And we can bring that back to you. If you choose to approve our first application, then we'll come back to you with more of that by the time we get back to you, which is an engineered site plan, special exception. We'd already pretty much know if Wetlands Commission, if we're going to pursue it, and if Wetlands Commission will approve that, and the town will let us put one in there, will, at least preliminary indications of that. We would like to do that if we can put everything together. But it's much beyond Planning and Zoning Commission at this point. There are other entities in town that have jurisdiction.
Now, even if you do that, Chief Lindstrom seemed to think that that would actually connect into Strawberry Fields, but when I look at the layout of Strawberry Fields, I didn't see a place where that would be connecting in, so...
It would connect only to the existing trail system and boardwalk system within Major Donnelly, which goes up to Sullivan Avenue and the parking lot area. I don't think anybody's been proposing we actually have a pathway to Strawberry Fields. People from Strawberry Fields walked into the system, existing system, and then they would connect to our nine-hundred, a thousand-feet, or what have you, of new pathway over to the Sullivan Avenue Plaza area. Basically, that was, we'd start at the southwest corner of our site, behind Geisler's, and behind Mexicali Grill in that area, the Tartsinas property, and then cut over to a point, you know, so we didn't lay out exactly where it would be. We know approximately where it would be, subject to approval of the town agencies beyond this board, especially the Inland Wetlands Agency and the Town Council.
Well, I certainly wouldn't want to make that part of this zone change anyway, so I would hope you would look into that. I like the idea when you come to us with a site plan.
Yeah, my client's in agreement. We're going to address that with other entities, and if you approve this application, we'll come back to you with an answer, because we'll already have to have gone through Wetlands Commission before you even see the site plan.
Yeah, and the only reason I brought up the connection to Strawberry Fields is Chief Lindstrom seemed to think that that was possible, and you're not looking at that. I wanted to clarify that.
No, it'd be a much longer pathway, and it'd be multiple pathways to have it hook up to Strawberry Fields, and I don't know, I really don't know. We're going to have ongoing discussions with Strawberry Fields with, I've already met with them three times. A fourth time would be certainly, as we're in design, about the buffer, because we want their input on that, with a lot of different ways to attack that issue and meet your requirements for buffering. And we'd also want to discuss, do they want to have a direct connection with the path? Some residents didn't even want a pathway from our development over to the shopping center, and some did. So there are enough oppositions, so we're not pursuing that this time. If they want it, we'll talk to them. But, you know, with a lock gate or something.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. At this time, I want to interrupt commissioners, as we have two people from the public that are on the line would like to speak. So I will ask town staff if they could let one of those individuals into the meeting.
Mr. Chair, they're being let in now.
Okay, thank you. Good evening.
Hi, good evening. Hi, I'm Annette Bosch, 36 Sunrise Lane in South Windsor. I'm an eighteen-year resident of the town. I moved here from Ellington, Connecticut, where I originally grew up. At the time, I looked at South Windsor as the West Hartford-ish of our area. The remodeling of the Geisler's Plaza area of town obviously is overdue. While jobs and tax revenue increases should clearly speak for themselves, we should remember on the referendum in March of this year, the voters of this town opposed excessive spending. I'm sure those same voters would welcome additional tax revenues in our town generated from additional local businesses and this project. I shop local and enjoy Geisler's for the quality of meats and their customer service. If Geisler's leaves South Windsor, I will shop at one of their other locations, not at a big-box store. We need to support Geisler's and this project with the zone change. Geisler's is a family business and supports our community, and they have met multiple rounds of requests. Not really sure what the holdup is. We appear to be making room for a Costco and possibly an Aldi's of all things. We need to ask ourselves this question: Do we want South Windsor to resemble West Hartford, Connecticut, or will we become the next Manchester, Connecticut? Thank you.
Thank you very much. If you could let the next person in?
Mr. Chair, the other person hung up.
Okay. Then we'll move to our next commissioner. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, it's nine-thirty, and...
A public hearing doesn't have an ending, so...
Great.
Okay. Commissioner Foley?
I guess, a question for Peter. And again, nobody wants to, everybody wants Geisler's to stay, everybody wants the plaza renovated. Question to you is, has the plaza been sold? Is it a new owner?
No.
You're the original owner?
Well, I don't know what you mean by original, if you didn't build it.
This property, as it exists right now, how long have you owned the property?
About ten years.
Ten years. I guess my concern is, moving forward, first of all, I do believe that some sort of access walkway for students to get to the high school is, however the plan comes out, but I do believe that that's a necessity. My concern is, I won't take it too personal, but to reward somebody for bad behavior is not in my personality. So I look at a place for ten years that has, it's been called blight, despair, every name under the book, and to reward, to say that the only way that this plaza is going to survive is if we give housing, which impacts human resources, police, fire, schools, a whole array of things are going to get affected. So I guess my question is, is there any guarantee, like, how do we guarantee that this isn't going to happen again? We give you housing, the housing gets built, and then the plaza, ten years down the road again, Geisler's is still the anchor. But how do we, how are you doing with your tenants? Like, with this proposal, I'm sure you're already working with tenants. Where are we at?
Well, in fact, I'm not actively marketing the space yet. I'd like to know that we're in line to achieve this next level of approval and then get to the site plan approval, where we can more fully develop the plans, and then perhaps as early as this summer before the International Council on Shopping Centers, which we're a member of, we would appear with a booth in Boston, and then again in New York next year to try to attract tenants. We do have a fairly good idea of who the target market is for those vacancies, and we're very optimistic that we can fill it up, particularly in the presence of one-hundred-and-twenty-five units of new apartments. And I can understand, Mr. Foley, how you could interpret the condition of the property as being bad behavior. But I would say to you that we are very sophisticated investors, and we know what we're doing, and we knew what we were doing when we bought this shopping center. But the fact of the matter is, we inherited a very archaic structure of leases in the shopping center, and it made sense for us to not fill the property back up without having a plan in place for a complete redevelopment of the shopping center. Tearing out the parking lot, completely reconstructing it, the only thing that will be left to the existing retail structure is the roof and the four walls and the structure itself. In fact, the roof membrane will be completely replaced. All-new facade, all-new mechanical, electrical, and plumbing throughout the whole facility. And this is proposed to be done in concert with the construction of the apartments. So, you know, we needed to be able to put together a comprehensive plan of development in order to proceed. And Geisler's has worked closely with us toward revamping the structure of their lease so that we can proceed accordingly, but they need the added assurance that the apartments will be there to have sort of a built-in market and create the synergy of a new development.
And our approval in 2020, was there something in place as far as, with our approvals, there was something in there regarding tenant to the COs and whatnot? Was there something in there about the plaza being renovated, or, Michelle?
At the time of the site plan, you have a phasing plan that will be submitted that will talk to, you're talking about the two-to-one ratio of residential to commercial, is that what you're speaking to?
What was the percentage?
It's a two-to-one ratio of residential to commercial. That's what your regulation allows. And there's also a phasing plan to be submitted at the site plan stage to talk about how the leasing up will occur.
Elsa? Okay, Commissioner Dexter?
My comments are brief. I again want to applaud the applicant for the good plan on the affordable units that we talked about at the last public hearing. I personally don't feel sidewalks are doable on that side of the street, and that's my opinion. And I just want to go on record by saying I am a little disappointed that there is a feeling from the public that this commission stonewalls or drags our feet purposely on any application. That's not how we operate. We try to do the best for the town. We ask tough questions, and we try to get what our plan of conservation and development tells us to go and try to get. So I think it's commendable that our chairman has tried to get public input, phone, email, in person now, thank goodness. But that takes up like two-thirds of our night, so, you know, this is the stuff that's really important, the commissioner comments. So I'm glad we're at this point. I know we're going to get there, Peter. I really, I know we are. Just hang in there.
Thank you.
Commissioner Flag?
Yeah. This thing's been battering around for a long, long time now, and the majority of the people, they all want the new stores. They definitely want those. And some of the public is interested in the apartments. But I understand with the builder, too, that he's not going to come in and just do the stores and forget about the apartments, because he won't make the money that he needs to make. So the apartments are going to be in there. The thing I have with the apartments is two things. One of them is that staircase. And it's true, there's sixty steps going up and a lot of landings and everything else like that, but when you made that decision, you didn't include any handicapped either. So my answer to that would be, why can't you make a waving ramp stairs like they do at a lot of other places? I think it would be an attraction. For one-hundred-and-twenty-five apartments, you got... For one hundred and twenty-five apartments, you gotta figure there's gonna be a man and a wife, or both of them have cars. That's over two hundred cars in that lot. And if they wanna just go across the street over to where the medical buildings are or something like that, or over to the salon or something like that, they don't wanna drive out and go over across that way. They could walk just as easy if the staircase was there. You don't wanna make 'em walk from where the apartments are all the way out to where the entrance is right now, coming in, and then back up Sullivan Avenue again. And that would be what you would make in the kids do also, going to school. And sooner or later, they're not gonna do that. They're gonna start climbing the wall and this and that and everything else. That's why I think a staircase is beneficial. The second thing I wanted to talk about is in the back by Building D, the burn. If you look at the woods going through there, that's all scraggly trees and everything else. Those need to be ripped out, and whether it's in design or not, the people over in Strawberry Fields deserve a good barrier between these new apartments and where they are. And to me, that constitutes putting... Taking out a lot of those trees in there, starting from scratch, put a burn in and put some trees on the top of it, and give them the barrier that they want. I think that would satisfy them quite a bit. As far as the sidewalk goes, going all around, sidewalks are... They're constantly being put in all over the town. And as we're being developed, sooner or later, a sidewalk could possibly go over there, but then again, maybe not. As far as the kids, overpopulating the schools, that you don't know. I mean, some of the places around in other towns, they thought there was gonna be a lot of kids, like Cheney Mills. Cheney Mills is loaded with people with all different apartments over there, but they don't have that many kids over there percentage-wise. So the same thing could happen here. You don't know. It's something that you just have to wait and see. I do think there isn't another development like this in town. It is something that could be an example set, and it could turn around and not be any good at all, or it could work out. I think the people of town seem to want it, and if that's what they want, and they know the consequences of all the different ways and things that could happen with this, then I think it's up to us to agree to give it to them. But I still think we need a couple of conditions in there also. Also, the people from Strawberry Fields should be able to be able to get into the back of that new complex, coming through to the stores and everything else. That should be an opening somewhere around in there, and that should be looked at also. Other than that, why, that's all I have to say about it.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay. I was hoping that design professionals would come back with a better option for a sidewalk on Sullivan Avenue. In my review and listening to all the testimony and listening to what the police chief had suggested or his concerns, it seems like a sidewalk on Sullivan Avenue going up to Ayers Road and crossing there would meet all of his concerns. The only one it wouldn't necessarily meet is the no pedestrian crossing sign, which I believe would have to be approved by the state of Connecticut. We have to do a better job of helping kids get to school safely and people get around the town of South Windsor safely. Michelle, does the applicant have these pictures?
They do not.
Okay.
A couple sets of them up there.
Paul, could you?
Yes. Wait a minute. Peter.
Oh, massless one. Grab it and run, Peter. Grab it and run. Okay, these are some of the pictures that I took for when I was walking up and down this street to observe the conditions. The first picture is looking from roughly the property line north on Sullivan Avenue. And just a quick question, Peter. All the trees and the vines that are shown in this picture, what's gonna happen with all those? I believe you're gonna be cutting into that area.
Dee, if you look at the exhibit over there, the public can't see because the camera doesn't show over there, I'm sorry, but it's the color exhibit we presented previously in other hearings, is our fourth one. The southeast corner indicates that we're gonna be grading up to a certain point, but there's an area there where we could retain the trees and the vines and all that stuff there. We could also get rid of the inva... There we go. Thank you, Mr. Wheeler. So the southeast corner is the lower right corner. We can preserve a lot of that if you want it. The question is, do we want it, given the condition of the trees and the vines that are all over it, invasive type vines and stuff, bittersweet and what have you? So that's a question. We can do that, but I think we need to do a comprehensive review with the assistant... With the input of Michelle and Jeff, and Jeff Folger, and also input of Strawberry Fields. We've met with them three times already, like to meet with them again, and come up with a comprehensive approach to the whole buffer, the whole common property line there, and what to do about it. We have a naturally occurring earth and berm that's there now, and we're gonna be lower on our side, roughly the same elevation as the Strawberry Fields units on their side.
Okay, you're getting into something else, Peter, and I apologize.
Okay.
I just don't want you to get off track. The first picture, you see the trees and the vines there, correct?
They can stay at that corner.
I'm not looking to have those stay, okay? I think it really looks lousy.
They're sad. I agree.
And I think it would really take away from the beauty of what this project could look like, okay? It looks like, with your representation, that everything, and I would include that tip, everything from that tip to the entrance, anything that's in there that is garbage is going to go, okay? That's what I'm hoping. Am I correct?
We're looking at the primary area, we're looking at southeast corner up to the... There's a wetland area to the east of the detention basin. That's the area we're focusing on the most. So below the pool, there's some wetland area in there.
Right.
We're gonna avoid that. We'll have to avoid that.
Right.
Encroach you on that. But everything to the... Basically, from the east, if you go straight down over, that's that buffer area we're gonna be looking at in conjunction with Strawberry Fields, with town staff and others and the commission about how you wanna handle that. We could completely remove all trees and vines and start all over again. You'd have a beautiful buffer over time, and you preserve nothing there other than what's on their side. They already have the buffers.
Right. Well, like Commissioner Flag was saying, and what I believe the Strawberry Fields people want is they want a slightly higher berm than what you had proposed.
Okay, we probably do that.
Which you seem in favor of, and then build up from there.
Yeah, I agree.
So that they have the best chance of having the five-year development coverage that the regulations state, okay?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I agree.
The picture here on the first page, it's a very pretty flat picture. There's not much that would have to be done as far as putting sidewalks in there. Granted, it's behind the guardrail and everything else, okay? The second page is actually Ayers Road, if it was continued through Sullivan Avenue, is all that area. And again, there's not much that would have to be done there as far as putting a sidewalk there in that area where the street was, if the sidewalk was connected to each side of Ayers. In the third page, where your sign is, yes, granted, there's the slopes that you discussed and might have been listed right at this cut. And then the last page is actually taken right about where I believe the corner, the northeast corner of the Hot Leathers parking lot is. And again, it's not as severe as to eliminate sidewalks. The whole problem comes with the application actually cutting in. And like I said in the previous meeting, getting ten pounds of sugar in a five-pound bag. When you look at your illustration and the grade, again, the grade that's currently there is not that much different than what there would have to be to get the... To make the sidewalk plan work. And the issues with it are where it stops and how do you get somebody up there safely from the apartments, walking to school? If they miss the bus, how do they get to school safely? Somebody gonna buy them an Uber? I don't think so. But a lot of it is changing the existing grade. And we had an application at Evergreen Walk where they did a lot of retaining walls and cut into the grade, and they made it work. And I just have to say something what Commissioner Dexter said about the public and what their interpretation is of planning and zoning and dragging our feet and kicking the can down the road. The reality is, it's due diligence. That's what we are elected to do. We weren't put in these positions to rubber stamp projects because members of the public think it's all so grand. I've been on this commission for twenty years, working at this and working hard, and it's not fair to us as commissioners when you shortchange what work we do. It's actually an insult. So I am disappointed in the people who talk like that. It's not just a rubber stamp. We have our due diligence to do. A lot of what I'm saying here, Paul... Peter? Peter to pay Paul. It's a condition that you guys are creating by carving into the landscape.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, respond to that. Again, as we've mentioned throughout this, the goal of the apartment complex is to have accessible paths from the shopping center to the apartments. The only way to accomplish that is to cut into the grade. We're already planning for five percent slopes, which is the maximum longitudinal slope allowed by ADA without a ramp. The existing Hot Leathers parking lot is not ADA compliant. It is too steep. It does not meet that regulation. So to just take those existing grades and build on that would make the entire sidewalk circulation there noncompliant. So that's why we have to cut into the grade to bring it down closer to the level of where the existing shopping center is. And that's where that cut-in occurs. It's not because we're putting too much on the site, it's because we're trying to make an accessible, walkable community from the apartment complex to the shopping center, which I think everybody can agree.
I understand what you're saying, Ben, but also if you had smaller buildings, then you could have some grade changes that would change some of what you're saying. I mean, the buildings are so large that one grade has to maintain that level. One thing that I had mentioned at the last meeting was Building D, if it could... And again, this might be contrary to what I've been saying, but if Building D could be set lower into the ground, then it wouldn't be so high, so much higher than the Strawberry Fields. Was that looked at at all, or no?
Well, again, we're in the general plan zone chain, uh, zone change stage of this process.
Right.
Should this project get approved, we're happy to take all your comments regarding that, regarding the buffer, looking at the condition of the existing trees. I don't think through this process, we're here to design all those little details. Again, should it get approved?
I understand that.
We'll look at that at that point in time.
Right. But so far with the sidewalk, that's not what I heard at all, you know? You guys are totally against doing the sidewalk.
Well, again, if I may, with that, Mr. Chairman, too. Again, there are cer... I will agree with you. There are spots along that frontage where it was certainly easier to build the sidewalk than other spots. I believe the chief of police said in his letter that even though he incorrectly said the sidewalk would go all the way to the Strawberry Fields entrance drive, which as Mr. Wagner stated, it would not, he's opposed to ending the sidewalk anywhere along there, forcing people to find a path to walk along Sullivan Avenue, and he's concerned about the safety of that. So whether that's at the Strawberry Fields entrance or at our property line, in addition to the cost, you know, we just don't feel that it's a safe condition to end that sidewalk at our property line, as we've stated in the previous hearing. So I'm not gonna reiterate what we've already stated.
Yeah, I've backed off of that, as I said five minutes ago, Ben, that I believe it should go up to Ayers Road, and there should be a safe crossing there. Now, if somebody's car breaks down and they're on one end or the other, you know, they still gotta walk down Sullivan Avenue. We gotta try and make it as safe as possible. I'm gonna go into some of my other comments. I wanna review the recreation, the four hundred square feet per unit. You had proposed meeting that by the clubhouse, the pool, and the saving the plants, the vegetation in the buffer. Could you just explain to me real quick how that meets the recreation?
It's, if you read the regulation, Mr. Chairman, it is not a recreation component. It is an open space component, two hundred square feet per unit, and preservation of natural features is included in that regulation.
Did you say two hundred or four hundred?
Two hundred.
Because I read in our minutes in your presentation, four hundred. And that might have been in staff's... I just want to make sure we're on the same page, Ben, you know?
I'll get the regulation.
Yeah. Ms. Flag's looking at the regulation on our plan. On our plans, we, we do show 200 square feet per unit and how we're meeting that square footage.
Okay. I just wanna make that, make it clear which we're following. Okay, when, there, there've been a couple members of the public that said that sidewalks aren't on the plan for the Plan of Conservation and Development. Well, when that plan was done in 2014, having resident, residential here wasn't part of that plan. It talked about some mixed use and stuff, possibilities, but we didn't talk about putting residential on this particular lot. So of course, it wasn't included in that, that plan at that time. But it is something that we should change, because if we go to the state of Connecticut or the state of Connecticut has a project coming up, and they go by our Plan of Conservation and Developing, we're never gonna have a sidewalk there, we're never gonna have safe access. And to be honest, there's been a lot of applications that came before us in the past. And one is Strawberry Fields. I was an advocate for putting a sidewalk in when it was being built. And, you know, I got the old, oh, well, it'll be a sidewalk to nowhere. Well, every project, the first project is always a sidewalk to nowhere. But when you have 10 projects and all the sidewalks connect, the time to put the sidewalks in is when you're developing or redeveloping the plaza or the property. That's the time to do it. And I'm not talking about a mile down the road is the next sidewalk. When we develop in that area, we'll get to it in time. And I might not be around, you might not be around at that time, but that's what the plan is. So, I, I'm starting to feel like a minority here with the sidewalk, but I believe we need to do as much as possible with what we have. I think having the sidewalk go to Ayers Road would address, like I said, the police chief's concerns, except for the do not cross, and that would be something that would have to be, I believe, put into the approval condition. I, I heard an analogy last meeting about walking on Sullivan Avenue equivalent to walking on Route 5. And I think a better analogy would compare it to walking on Buckland Road, which we require sidewalks for all new developments over there. I'm not gonna beat it to death. I know I've got my concerns, and I think my heart is in the right place. I think, no matter what, we gotta have a project that makes it safe passage. And even if it was a sidewalk similar to what we did with Harbor Chase, they have, they are set down in the, on their lot below Buckland Road. But we have a, we had a sidewalk included in that, which goes up the road, up north, and then it makes one gradual turn and comes back up and meets the sidewalk on Buckland Road. And there's no landings or anything because there's no stairs and I, I understand what you're saying with that. 60 steps is a heck of a lot of steps, and it's not ADA compliant. But something was able to be engineered at Harbor Chase, and, you know, it just didn't seem like that's very palatable to this applicant. So that's what I got. Commissioners, anything else? I see one member of the public has their hand up. Is, do you have something that's new information? Hold on. If you have a brief thought, I'll entertain it, but you cannot do it from your seat, you have to come up to the microphone and reintroduce yourself. No, up at the microphone, please.
My name is John Bayreuter. My father was Swiss. I have relatives in Switzerland. And when you show me a situation touches what you have, the 30-foot elevation, and you're trying to figure out how to get somebody across that street, the Swiss would do the following. They would build a walkway, a tunnel underneath Sullivan Avenue to the other side, and then have a covered staircase where you could then come up to road level on the other side. And that way, you could go across this street by going under it in any kind of weather. You would not have the safety concern. You would not be subject to weather conditions when you're crossing the street. They use that, for example, in their, their old cities, you know, cities built 2,000 years ago, in Bonn they have one, where they have extremely heavy traffic. You'd be killing people if you tried to cross at street level. You go underneath, you go down some steps, you go underneath, you come out the other side. They use that in their cities. Now, when they build things in Switzerland, they build things to last for hundreds of years. So they build with concrete, they build with steel, they build with stone. And if you can do something like that here, it's going to be expensive, but it will be safe and last a long time. If you'd like me to try to get some pictures of some of the things they've done, I can try to do that, if that would be of any help to the board.
Yeah, and I appreciate your comments and sentiment. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Commissioner Wagner.
Thanks again. One thought occurs to me, I'm still very concerned about the Ayers Road crossing and the students actually using that when they shouldn't be, so I think it's really important to go for that. The thought occurred to me, though, that, you know, pedestrians in some ways are, I'll say they're like ants, you know, they'll find a path. So if you think about the enter, you know, someone coming from, you know, the area of the Dairy Queen and coming across Sullivan, down Sullivan Avenue, if the sidewalk isn't there, they can come down into this neighborhood, and there are pathways to get to whatever you're gonna do to come up to Ayers Road. So use the internal walkways, deal with the staircase or the Serpentine pathway, and then you'll have access to the Ayers Road intersection, which hopefully will get a pedestrian crossing on. The other thing is, you know, I'm looking at the drawing, which is the Utilities Plan, C Charlie UT 1. And you can see some elevations marked on there, those are probably the original elevations. But it strikes me that, you know, an easement for a sidewalk leading to your property line for when and if the town gets, you know, from Ayers Road over to your property line, without actually building the sidewalk that would dump people out in that unsafe location, would at least give us the ability to build a sidewalk when we finally build one in front of Strawberry Fields. So those are my two suggestions. Take advantage of the internal walkways, figure out some way to get up to Ayers Road and across, and then have an easement out to the southeast corner of the property.
I, I understand what you're saying, Steve, but again, that doesn't really improve the connectivity that a sidewalk on Sullivan Avenue would. So that's where we're at. Peter, I don't know if anything I've said or any of the other commissioners, if you want a chance to address it.
I, I think we've addressed virtually everything that was brought up. Most of this is going to be fully addressed comprehensively, some suggestions from commissioners, and we'll deal with town staff and others and our design team to come up with some responses to that, when we get into engineering. And what, what is really possible here? We've been looking at some things on a very cursory level, but we haven't looked at them in depth, because we're not supposed to have to do that in general plan. Many general plans are done without even a, a grade changes or anything looking seriously at that. We've looked more at that than we normally would, but we're gonna be getting into that later on. We, part of our design was lowering the site because we wanted to lower the buildings adjacent to Strawberry Fields, and that also interplayed with the ADA requirements. So there's a lot of factors that go into the grades of this thing, and we'll more comprehensively review that now we've heard from you, with the town staff, as this thing evolves to the next stage, if you choose to approve this project. So we can, we can do that. I think we, I think we've pretty much touched on everything. We have to, if we get to the next stage, that's when we'll, we'll be addressing a lot of these items. There are some good suggestions and some may or may not play out. I, I don't know right, right at this point, but we, we look forward to working with the commission on that, working with staff first, before it gets back to you. And I, and I think, I don't think we need to address a lot of the specific comments right now, because we've already talked about a lot of those previously.
Yeah.
And this, this is a fourth night.
Yep.
And, and if, and if you choose to approve this, then we can go forward with, with the project, and if you don't, we're not. It's pretty simple. We either have a project or we don't. Thank you.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I gave you any opportunity.
Yeah, no, I appreciate the opportunity, thank you.
And I, I do realize, you know, a lot of the sidewalk talk and those type of design things are done in preparation for the site plan and the special exception.
It is.
But I wanted to make sure I brought all those issues forward now, because now is your design time. And, you know, there, there was also some members of the public felt that we're just throwing things at you and trying to get something to stick. That's the impression I got. And it really is doing due diligence.
The benefit of this two-step process for zone change with a general plan and then a final plan is if we don't spend all the time doing all the engineering, and this is like a sounding board, we give you that layout, and you respond to it, and we hear your concerns and suggestions, and then you say, hey, okay, we, we like the zone change, we like this, but we want you to also address the following things. We've been heavy on the buffers and sidewalks and other issues. We'll, we'll look at all that when we get into an engineering, but it's like a sounding board, and it's a conceptual plan, it's not supposed to be a fully engineered plan.
Right.
So we, we will come, if you choose to approve the project, we'll come back more comprehensively looking at those issues that have been raised, and I'm glad that you did raise them. If you have a concern of something, I'd rather hear it than be surprised later on when we come in for a site plan, and, and then also we go, where'd that come from? You know, I'd rather know it upfront, and then we can respond to it with the town staff before we come back to you. Thank you.
Okay. So commissioners, is there any reason to keep this public hearing open? Town staff?
Nope.
Yeah, no, this, this is one application I'm talking about right now. So, town staff, all set?
All set.
Okay, and applicants, all set? So, hearing no other testimony, I'll close the public hearing at 10:12 PM, and we'll move.
Chairman, do we wanna advise, like, we do have our two other applicants here for the regular meeting, should we maybe advise them to reschedule for the June meeting and try to get through our next public hearing? Might be all we can accomplish tonight, or what's your thought on that?
Yeah, and I know we've got at least one member that wakes up at 4:00 AM in the morning doing, you know.
I, I think the gentleman is here from the Ticket Network, and I know the gentleman from Lowe's is on the call, that if we were to choose that, we should let them know.
Yeah, and it's also almost 10:15, and we've got this other public hearing.
Mr. Chair, I would personally suggest that we also not have that public hearing. I don't know how much discussion that's gonna be involved, but it is getting late. If anything, I'd rather move directly to a motion on this hearing and then go home.
Well, there's, I don't know how much deliberations we'll have either. Michelle?
Yes.
So what do we have?
You have, your applicants are here, they are from far away.
Yeah, I know.
I think that if you could just maybe hear the, they have some changes, very succinct changes from your last meeting to review at the public hearing.
Okay.
Really, it's your, it's your, your call.
I would like to hear their changes, but I do wanna ask the commission, we've got six people here, and I know at least one of them needs to get to bed soon. Everybody good with hearing it?
And then we'll cancel our regular, the items on the regular meeting will postpone to the, the next regular meeting. Is that fair?
Okay.
Thank you. So we're not gonna hear you tonight. Sorry.
Yeah, if you gotta go or whatever. Okay, so I called an application, application 21 dash 20P, Evergreen Walk. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Karen Johnson, I'm with Charter Realty and Development, here tonight on behalf of Evergreen Walk Lifestyle Centers. Also joining me this evening is Dave Gagnon from Langen Engineering, and virtually, if we have any questions, for John Plant, our traffic engineer, and Joe Avine, architect, also from Langen Engineering. We also printed out copies of our presentation this evening, so we can, we can be very brief. I think you have everything in front of you that we're gonna be speaking to, and...
Two, four, six, seven. Is Michael still up there?
Okay. Do you have the, the 11 by 17s that we handed out this evening?
Yes.
So there's two, two sets of them. We will be speaking to the one on top, which is titled Overall Vehicular Circulation. It is also on a board to your right. So, thank you for agreeing to listen to us this evening. We've been waiting, but I also wanna say, thank you for reopening these hearings and bringing us back to some sense of normalcy. I know it's a bit of a challenge, it's been a difficult evening. Since our last meeting two weeks ago, you asked us to take a closer look at the internal circulation patterns. So since that time last week, we met on site with, obviously, town planner Michelle Lipe, town engineer Jeff Doolittle, as well as fire marshal Summer, Walter Summers, and went over specifically... circulation movements, truck routes, and we took a closer look at the request of Fire Marshal Summers at fire truck movements in and out of the site and throughout the roundabout. I think you also have a little bit more involved presentation, which gives you a little bit of background on internal circulation at Evergreen Walk, the original master plan, which was approved in 2003. And just an overview of some of the issues that we discussed at our zone, zone text amendment, which I'm not going to go through this evening. But I think an important point is just to understand that Evergreen Walk was originally contemplated in 2003. The shops, which are the Promenade shops at the lives, at Evergreen Walk, were developed in 2004. And as part of that original master plan, there was contemplated an internal north-south access drive, which has become, sure, that's okay. Sure, which has become Tamarack. And so, in this plan, you can see Tamarack comes in from Buckland and then traverses the entire Evergreen Walk master plan community. What we're here tonight to discuss is, thank you, Michelle, is an amendment to the general plan of development. And we wanted to take a closer look at those internal circulation patterns. Looks, looks great up on the big screen. Again, blue Tamarack Avenue, the last two segments of this will be completed with the Costco development. There's a segment just adjacent to independent living and then obviously going through the Costco parking lot. This is your primary north-south connector. And looking at our proposed relocation of Evergreen Way and speaking with your professionals, we looked at what's termed now as the East Access Drive, which is in green. And the East Access Drive provides an alternative north-south connector, aligns with Hemlock Avenue, and then aligns with our proposed relocation of Evergreen Way. Michelle and Jeff suggested that we carry that all the way through to an intersection with Tamarack and to rename East Access Drive and that segment of the relocated Evergreen Way as a new road name, which we looked at a couple of different options, came up with Cottonwood Lane, which is a, believe it or not, a native tree species that is prevalent within Evergreen Walk thanks to our environmental consultant. And that name is not taken within the town of South Windsor. So, we are proposing it as a new Cottonwood Lane to provide yet again another north-south connection. And I know there were some more detailed questions related to our site design. I'd like to turn it over to Dave, who will go through a series of additional illustrations that we, we prepared to hopefully better show you things like pedestrian circulation, internal circulation around the, the new development area, and then how it all ties in again.
Thank you, Karen. For the record, my name is Dave Gagnon, civil engineer with Langen Engineering here representing the applicant. And I would like to, like to advance it to the next slide. Oh, there we go. Okay, this next slide, which is Figure One, our general plan of development, shows you a more zoomed-in perspective of our development of Unit Two, which you could see on the, the left side of this image. Just a few things I'd like to highlight. Our limit of development, which you could see there in green, is roughly seven acres. We'll be demolishing...
So, you're on Figure One, correct?
Yeah, Figure One. It should be the, the next, after, there's a bunch of text.
It, it would be great if these were numbered. That way we, you know, don't have to spin around like...
Yeah, it's, it's part of the large 11 by 17 packet. We dropped those off today. It should be...
I believe I have that right. Right. Okay. What number page is this in your packet? Or is it?
It should be...
Oh, this is, this is a, another packet? Or the same one?
It's, it's the same pack, same packet. One packet has some additional bullets on it, which Karen just spoke to. And if you go after those bullets, you'll find our general plan of development, which is Figure One.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
And you can also see on the board in front of you and, and, you know, behind you on the image. So, just to reiterate what I spoke to, Unit Two is what we're focusing on, which is on the left side of this image. We're developing roughly seven acres, which is highlighted in green. We'll be demolishing two existing buildings totaling roughly 53,000 square feet. Those two buildings will be replaced with roughly 50,000 square, gross square feet of retail, which will include a 40,000 gross square foot grocer and a adjacent 10,000 square foot inline retail building. Just a few things to highlight about this site development. The main parking field will be just to the south, our page left of our development. Loading will be in the rear of the property, so to the northwest of the building. As we discussed, we're providing continuous north-south connection to Tamarack by aligning the existing East Access Drive with a newly named Cottonwood Lane. And you could see that in green, which provides connectivity through the entire plaza. A couple other highlights, just north of the building, you could see a wooded area. Those are wetlands. We are increasing the buffer from those wetlands with our development by knocking down those buildings and pulling everything away from those wetlands. We're providing a buffer to enhance that wetland area by removing invasive species and putting in some wetland-enhanced plantings. From a stormwater quality standpoint, we're improving water quality. Overall, we'll be decreasing, slightly decreasing the impervious area on-site. There'll be rain gardens throughout the parking, the parking lot. We put five or six where applicable. And there'll be water quality units at all discharge points. A few other highlights is throughout this development, providing new landscaping, new lighting to match the existing theme of Evergreen Walk. And I'm just going to flip to the next slide here. And there were some questions the last time we spoke about pedestrian connectivity and circulation. So, what we did here is we highlighted all the pedestrian access throughout the site in blue. So, we were very sensitive to this. We provided access to the surrounding uses, including the independent living complex to the west, Evergreen Way to the south in the shops in that direction, Hemlock Avenue to the south, and to the east, Buckland Road. Continuous access up and down Cottonwood Lane. And to the east of this is the Panera in the spot, which we also provide connectivity to. One thing to note, there is a large retaining wall just west of our property. So, we couldn't provide direct access to independent living complex, but we did via the two existing roadways. In the next slide...
If you could, just on that?
Sure.
I don't mean to interrupt, but on that page there, is you, do you have one entrance or two for the grocery store?
Are we, we talking about pedestrian entrances or vehicular? Vehicular entrances to the...
For the store itself.
Oh, to the store itself. Do you have...
Karen Johnson, I can answer that. There's one entrance and one exit to the storefront and then a separate entrance for the retail building.
Do you have a cross-section or something that shows that or no?
So, you, you can see on this plan, there are identifiers. There you go. Thanks.
Collapsing society.
Yes. So, those are the identifiers and we've lined up the, the crosswalks to the main entrance.
Okay. So... Okay, so which ones, that's the entrance?
Yes, it is.
Okay, and the other one, it's the exit?
Yes.
Okay.
They're, they're both two-way, but one is intended to enter the store and begin your shopping. And the other at the exit is closer to the, the checkouts.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Dave Gagnon with Langen. And I'll advance to the next slide. There was a few questions about traffic flow on Hemlock, so we just wanted to highlight how traffic would work on Hemlock Avenue. If you're coming from Buckland and you're going westbound on Hemlock, we just wanted to note that there is no stop bar in that location. So, that would be unrestricted movement on Hemlock to either go straight or take a right onto Cottonwood Lane. So, the intent is to, you know, if, if there was a stop bar, we wouldn't want to back up traffic to Buckland. So, just something we wanted to, to highlight. In the same cases, if you're coming from the independent living complex, you're coming east on Hemlock, there's also unrestricted movement coming across Cottonwood Lane. So, that would prevent any kind of backup at a potential stop sign.
Okay, that, we had that in another area of Evergreen Walk over near where the Johnny Rockets used to be. And that created a hazard because people saw the stop sign for them and they didn't realize that the traffic going the other way didn't have a stop sign. But I, I apologize for interrupting you.
And that's noted. And we'll work with, you know, the town engineer and town staff to make sure this is all appropriately signed and, and clear based on our lessons learned at other locations throughout the plaza. If there's no more questions on this slide, I'll, I'll like to flip to the next one. And this slide here just highlights our parking lot circulation and, and the intent of, of this design. A few things I, I wanted to speak to was, we talked about pedestrian circulation, which you could see in dark blue vehicular circulation. So, in light blue, you could see the access points to the parking lot. There would be a, a one-way access off the existing roundabout into the parking lot. There would be a two-way access off of Cottonwood and also further up Hemlock, close to the independent living complex, there would be a two-way access. So, you know, we, we think there's plenty of access points. And one of the, one of the main design points we had with this parking lot is we want to relocate the access drives around the development area. This would separate traffic from active parking. So, we felt that was very important to provide Cottonwood Lane around the building versus going, you know, through the development. Truck circulation, you could see in orange. And with this design, we provided a truck route that does not conflict with customer parking and provides minimal pedestrian conflict. So, we wanted to make sure we, we kept that truck circulation away from that main parking field and away from any potential customers. And with that, you know, we're, we're very excited about this project. We think it activates the northern section of the shops with a, you know, we think a very exciting new tenant. And this anchor tenant, we believe will stimulate new leasing activity and help revive the shops. And we're happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Okay. If that concludes your presentation, I'll just turn to town staff, our director of planning, Michelle Leip.
Thank you. I have really nothing new to report, just other than we did meet on staff with the fire marshal as well, who is reviewing some of the revisions for truck turning radiuses. But I think the feeling was that it could be adequately designed to accommodate the fire needs.
I'll turn to our town engineer, Jeff Doolittle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, this addresses, many of my comments and many of them are going to be addressed during the final design stage. But I was making sure that the, in particular, look at the intersection of Hemlock and the East Access Drive or Cottonwood Drive and make sure that functions well. I believe it's two-way stop now, but I'm concerned about enough room for trucks to maneuver through that intersection. And I believe they'll look at that. And then make sure they look at the traffic, any traffic impacts, impacts on Buckland Road as a result of this development. If you remember, when Costco came in, they pointed out they may be a concern about access down Hemlock Avenue heading southbound and also access on Tamarack Avenue at the southern end of the development. So, we'd like them to look at that as part of their final design as well. That's all.
Okay. Michelle, public safety, the, did the police chief look at this?
I had comments from both the police chief and from our new sergeant, Mark Hellewitz, who's traffic, and they had no concerns.
And they what?
They had no concerns.
Okay. Commissioners? Actually, do we have any letters or members of the public are on the phone?
We have no letters. Scott can let us know if we have anybody on the phone.
We have no one on the phone.
Okay, thank you, Scott. Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn to commissioners. I'm gonna start with Commissioner Flag.
Are, this Cottonwood Lane or the truck route, are, are any of these going to be converted into four lane like they have up in Enfield when you're going around Costco and those for people to turn off easier or go straight ahead? You know what I mean? Two lanes on each side?
No.
No?
No.
So, it's, the whole development is still going to be strictly just two lane then?
Two lanes, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Dexter?
No questions.
Commissioner Foley? Commissioner Wagner?
Yeah, I like the Cottonwood Lane. I'm a little concerned, and maybe this is an aesthetic concern, but we, and maybe, Karen, you could talk about the part that goes behind the Costco. I don't think they envisioned that as a kind of a major thoroughfare, which it's sort of turning into here. So, I don't know if you had conversations with them or how this fits in with, you know, the way that project is running.
So, I think, I think what you're referring to is this continuation of Tamarack through their parking lot behind their building. And, you know, I've had many conversations with Michelle Leip about that. And from Michelle's perspective in reviewing the last version of an amendment to the general plan of development for Evergreen Walk, this is what was contemplated. I, I think when we look at internal circulation, I think it's important for us to keep in mind that these are essentially different routes of what people have available to them. And we can go back a little bit and look at the overall. So, the overall, of course, is you can come in off of Buckland. In this area, of course, you have Tempo Hotel, you have the residential apartments, you have the daycare, and then you have the independent living. Over in this, in this neck of the woods, you still have a fairly significant lot that's for development potential, and then a smaller area here for development potential. So, these are, these are essentially internal access drives. And, and the intention of that, again, going back to the original master plan from 2003, the intention of this, and clearly I don't have to tell you anything. If you've been in this community for a long time and you understood the purpose of a master planned, planned unit development, it was to look at the future. And so, 20 years later, we're trying to assess what the future is... And so 20 years later, we're trying to assess what the future is for Evergreen Walk. And by creating, in this case, multiple north-south connectors, it does two things. It takes the pressure off of Buckland, and it creates internal traffic calming measures, particularly around this section of Evergreen Way, which, as you know, meanders through the shops. Adjacent to it are angled parking, where people are parking adjacent to the roadways, and shoppers are moving in between, not always frankly at designated crosswalks. And so Evergreen Way is doing what it's supposed to do, which is to provide access to these storefronts, access to some of these parking areas if people can't find parking along Evergreen Way. But this, this is intended to be a very slow movement traverse. If you want to go from here over to Costco, you know, as a resident, lives in this community, and you know, I want to get over here, but I don't want to go this way, you know, you're living over here at the independent living, and you do, whether it's by golf cart or car, you want to scoot over to Costco, you know that you can go this back way. What we're trying to do and what we'll highlight with signage and better internal directional signage is also encouraging people to use this Cottonwood Lane along the traverse of a parallel to Buckland Road. You know, we think that some people may be coming in from Buckland, making a left, knowing they don't want to wait at another signalized intersection, and use this to get to this new, redeveloped shopping area. I think, I think what we've tried to emphasize all along is that this is not a significant change to what's out there today. It's really an adaptation to how Evergreen Walk has grown around the Promenade Shops and to make it work better. And that's what we, we think that we're doing. Again, I don't need to tell you anything you don't know, but I just wanted to understand the vacancy rate. We're looking at 34 out of 75 vacant shops with a per-square-footage vacancy rate of 44%. That's not sustainable. And these are issues that were starting to develop pre-COVID. It's a changing retail environment, and what we're trying to do is, within the context of what South Windsor has already envisioned for Evergreen Walk with the approval of Costco, is make what we would like to do to reinvigorate the shops better.
Thank you. You answered that question. Just want to be reassured with all the, and I think maybe this picture is a little better, Figure 202, pedestrian circulation. You will clearly be able to get, to walk on sidewalks with crosswalks as appropriate to the grocery store if you live in the independent living place. That's all.
Yeah, that's correct. Everything highlighted here in blue is either a crosswalk or a sidewalk. So there's two different access points from the independent living complex. So, you know, we're very sensitive to that, and there will be pedestrian access.
I'm good with this. Thanks.
Okay. Commissioner Bernstein?
I have nothing, thank you.
Okay. You guys can shut your phone, microphones off. Michelle, Panera Bread, I recall when we were doing that application, and correct me if I'm wrong, there was possible need that they would need additional parking. And we created a walkway across the Evergreen Way then, and there's a little staircase that goes down to some parking that's right there.
Yeah, they plan on reinvigorating that with your new plan. Is that correct? That walkway will be redone.
Right.
Okay. So it will still be there, because I'm not seeing that on this plan.
So this plan does not show proposed grading. We did present a separate plan for Jeff Doolittle's review. In order to meet the necessary slopes for a grocery store, we have to redesign this parking area. And so the crosswalk that you refer to will still be here. There is also a, a crosswalk and a sidewalk to utilize this parking if necessary.
Okay, and I, I believe the purpose might have been for employees if I...
I mean, they were meeting our parking requirements. I think it was just a concern if they needed some overflow parking that obviously was available in the immediate vicinity, and we wanted to make sure that there's a safe access to it.
Okay.
It wasn't part of a parking requirement, per se. It was just more of a, kind of...
Right. And I, and I think, you know, we understand sometimes employee parking has to be managed, and in this case, employee parking will be designated at the rear of the building along this line. If we have to, we can work with the Panera manager to direct employee parking to this parking area here, which is minimally utilized today. And that's, that's actually not a bad, you know, not a bad walk for employees in this area.
Yeah. I am concerned about trucks coming in and not having a stop sign and cars not realizing that they are not going to stop. I don't know if the police chief or whoever reviewed it realized that... Pardon me?
What's the timeliness of this? Is it coinciding with the construction of Costco or afterward?
Do you mean what is our anticipated construction period? So obviously, we hope for approvals for this project. We're ready to submit for site plan application next week if we get a decision soon. And ideally, we will be working on construction documents, building permits, and commence construction in the spring. Costco's current schedule is to open this fall.
Okay.
Just, I wanted to answer your question regarding the truck circulation. I mean, one thing to note is that trucks accessing the existing plaza use Hemlock Avenue. So we'll be really maintaining the existing condition as is. So just something to note.
Pardon me?
With your question about truck access coming up Hemlock, it is accessed to the current buildings. They do use Hemlock Avenue. So just something I wanted to note.
Right, they used Hemlock Avenue and they went up to Evergreen Way, correct? Because there was...
Yeah, I think, I think, yeah, they, they, they do come in today. Trucks that are servicing both Panera and the, and the nail and spa do come in today and make that bad turn.
Right, I was talking about for the existing buildings, the Sakura, the Old Navy. Commissioners? Nothing?
Nothing from town staff, no.
Okay. Great. Any last?
Thank you for your time, and I hope information we've submitted is, is enough to show support for consistency with prior decisions with respect to the general plan of development for Evergreen Walk. We believe consistent with the decision-making process that's outlined within your regulations, which is effectively at the level of a, of a site plan decision. And we know that some of the points that you've raised can be incorporated into our final site development plans, and we can have further discussions related to grading and pedestrian access and, and truck routing during that stage. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Commissioners, if there's nothing else, we'll close the public hearing at 10:48 PM. And I've had enough for tonight. Since we've passed our time already, we're automatically adjourned. Thank you. I know. My clip, I might have to get a better clip, though.
I'm cutting here for Caitlin first, thank you.
Oh my God, Caitlin.
I gotta have a copy of that tomorrow.
No, I, I've got a few copies, unless you took mine. Thank you.